Good evening and welcome to the Town of Douglas Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, November 18th, 2021. The meeting is 7:02. First item on the agenda, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Louis Tassino's passing. So if we could do that, that would be great. First item is the A&R Plan. Shirley Downs Trustee Kathy Brosnahan, 75 South Street. Is anyone here to present that? Come on up.
I don't have anything to present. I always thought my meeting was going to be there.
Unfortunately, she was indisposed of this afternoon. I'm the surveyor there.
Okay. Okay, sure.
Probably won't talk to me anyway.
Yeah, of course. Of course. Do you want to give us a little overview of what you're doing?
Well, it's just, it's really just the acreage that's there. The project is going to end up on Old Palm Road. It's a little twist. We ended up finding out with that little sliver between rural land and Old Palm Room really belonged to the developer and never transferred. I don't think the town ever collected taxes on it. So ultimately, she purchased that sliver from the developer. The attorneys went back and forth. So it's now a done deal and we incorporated the two passes together. So now she has the general power.
Name and address for the record, please.
Irish Boston, Special Data and Design.
Address.
99 South Main.
Thank you. Okay. Grab of the plans. You've reviewed them.
I have. I have reviewed the plans. They meet all of the criteria for the A&R in the town. Just to piggyback off what you were saying, the original draft of this included a sliver land that you were talking about and had since been changed to eliminate that and show it as one owner.
Right.
The members here.
You're going to notice it's all in.
Right. The members here don't see the sliver. They're just seeing the revised addition. So I do have one thing to point out that shouldn't affect the vote for the A&R, but I understand that this is 61A agricultural property. And this is more for Ms. Downs, just your information. Transfer of land under 61A does require the town's first right of refusal. So at some point, your attorneys will probably be in touch with the town with regards to that. I don't believe the town would have interest in it, but it is a step in the process, is all. Yes. But otherwise, I have no objections to this A&R. It meets all of the criteria.
Thank you. Matt? Board? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to endorse the A&R Plan for 75 South Street.
Made, seconded by Jake. All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Left Stevens' eye.
For endorsement.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zooker, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye. Jake Schulter, aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well signed.
Cool.
Next item, 7:00 PM public hearing, continue Darkstream LLC. I would have to recuse myself, but it's continued to December 9th, 2021 at 7:15 PM. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue Darkstream LLC for 116 Davis Street to December 9th at 7:15.
Which is made and seconded by Mike. All's in favor.
Aye.
Roll call.
Left Stevens' eye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zooker, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye. Jake Schulter, aye.
Okay.
Still need roll call for unanimous?
I just need a new minute.
Your remote, as well as here. Hi, yep.
Did they leave a mile or any plans for us to sign?
Back there. We'll do like we did last meeting and sign them after the meeting.
May have a little bit of time. Matt, did you want to go over White and Reservoir Estates?
Yes, please.
Okay, so additional business, White and Reservoir Estates, written report and update on roadwork, road conditions and progress of the project, request for release of lots, number four, number six, number seven. Possible votes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ken Frazier, the Building Commissioner is here also. I'd like to move him to the table for comment.
Come on over.
Thank you.
How you doing, Ken Frazier, Building Inspector? I have been going down to the lots, down to that development, doing some, looking at the site. They are in the process of looming all of the back lots. They're going all the way out to the perimeter of the site with the looms. They're going to be hydro seeding. They've got, lot number four is all loomed out, lot number six partially loomed out, and lot number seven, they're waiting for the final approvals on the septic system. They want to loom that and the rest of it and hydro seed it all at the same time.
Sense.
They've taken, I think you guys had to report, they've put the curvings in, the new curbs in, curb stones are in. They haven't done any of the roadwork other than that for any of the catch basin elevations or anything. That's going to be all on the final. They've been doing a pretty good job of keeping the site cleaned up. All of their siltation barriers and everything are being maintained.
Okay.
Through the chair. Sidewalks. They just got the approval on the gravel for the sidewalks, and I believe they're going to start doing sidewalks tomorrow. They're going to be putting the gravel in, getting it compacted, and then Lennard will be doing the inspection on that. And then they'll be doing the asphalt thing on the sidewalks.
Asphalt sidewalks, okay.
I got one. Through the chair. Is there any boundaries being put into this part?
Good one. We can ask the developer. I don't think that was part of the decision.
No, it's not.
Okay. Do you want to speak on that, Bob?
Yeah, sure.
Name and address, please, for the record. Yeah, just that one question.
No, no bounds. No, there aren't any bounds in. I don't think they're on the plan.
Mike?
We know that there's been an issue, the one that we overlooked.
There's none on the plan? Is that what he said? Is that what he said? There's nothing on the plan?
Well, the bounds are on the plan.
On the plan, bounds are on the plan.
To be set, yeah. To be set.
It doesn't say stone bounds or anything to be set?
Not sure.
No.
We could probably check on that.
Can that be looked into?
Yeah.
Please. Because there's been an issue with a lot of the older development, and here we are building a new one. And I think it's something that...
Yeah, you see the bounds coming on the Asbills.
Yes.
Yeah.
But is there anything, any markers going to be put in?
The only ones we've had issues through the chair, the only one we've had issues on is the ones that have gone under.
Right, exactly.
So they would have completed.
If he's saying there's none on the plans, then...
No, they're on the plan.
I didn't believe they were, but if there are, they obviously had capital waiting for exactly that.
I would assume they are. I can't imagine a plan getting approved without...
I don't remember.
Especially road bounds for the...
I would think.
Yeah.
But there's something, if we could, just please.
Yes, sir.
Maybe next meeting or whatever.
Status on that?
Just a status on that.
As a matter of cooperative and collaborative between developers and ourselves, where we're going to town meeting and we're requesting money to finish these other developments and put them in, I think it would be, whether it's there or not, I think it would be a great gesture just to have those little concrete bounds put in as part of your delivery of the project. I just think it's a, just bringing it out here in the public, it would be a nice thing to do.
Well, it might be on the...
I'm assuming it's shown on the plan.
If it's not on the plan, it'd be done. I'm just saying I think it would be nice to do.
I can't imagine it's on the plan, but I would ask builders.
I don't know if they are or they're not on the plan. Okay.
Most likely they are.
This was approved in 2014.
Yeah.
Right. So we'll just wait and see.
Yeah, let's double check it.
Sounds good. Oh, just through the...
Yes.
Through the chair, Ken. There was the question that was at our last board meeting about the water runoff onto Northwest Main. Is that all resolved?
So, we did, Matt Bonight and myself took a walk through the entire site, all the way down to the property that had the issue with the water. All the way down through the entire woodland, there is no indication whatsoever with leaf litter being moved or siltation or any indication or topography-wise of water being able to get down to that site. The water itself is when you get right down to that property within 10 feet of that well, you can't even step. So, I'm not a geologist, and I explained that to the owner of the property. I said, you know, you might want, it could have been, I don't know, an underground stream may be moved or whatever. I don't know. But the indications are, to me, negative that it's coming from that development.
I appreciate you looking into it.
Okay, so the matter before us is the request for release of lots number four, number six, and number seven. Yes.
If I may make a recommendation, with the work that they're doing, as long as they continue, and I keep an eye on it anyways, I would recommend the board to release those if they so see it.
I concur.
Yes, okay.
One other quick question. Through the town meeting, is there going to be no A&R coming in front of this board?
Bob can speak for that.
Okay, it's for seven inches of setback. And the way I understand it, Matt, you can go ahead and explain, the Attorney General's Office has to sign off on the plan first before I can bring it in.
Yep, just making sure on that.
Through the chair.
What's going on in that status?
Through the chair. In addition to that, those plans have to be rightfully transferred and recorded before you could bring the A&R forward also.
Okay.
Just through the chair, do we know how many remaining lots? If we release these three, we have three other ones that aren't released yet? Two? Two?
I would like to get released as well. I'd like to apply for my building permits and try to get them in this winter so that we can finish up this project.
You planning for the December 9th meeting?
I can barely hear you, I'm sorry.
Are you, are you planning on that, on the December 9th meeting, or are you requesting that tonight?
I'd like to apply for the permits now. Okay, okay. We're not going to get them in the ground before that.
It's before us this evening, it's just the three.
Okay. Yeah, so we've got to get you on the agenda for additional business on the 9th for those two other lots which are number, lots number what?
One and 11.
Lots number one and 11.
Yeah. I mean, if I may, I know there's been a terrible track record here. I'm comfortable with the three, not with the five.
Yeah, yeah.
So I feel...
It's another one before us.
We're just going to worry about the three.
Oh, through the chair.
Yes.
What is, what is the bonding on this project? Is it a cash bond or is it, are we, are we holding lots?
We're holding lots.
It's a lot.
So if we, there's only two left, tell me we can't release anymore without us, because there's not a bond and we're holding lots as the bond.
We have a cash bond.
We have a cash bond?
Yes.
$155,000, which...
Okay, all right.
On the 9th, we're also going to be requesting a bond reduction without the sidewalk and without the curb.
Okay, we'll see. We'll see. Okay, we'll see after that meeting.
Yeah, I think if we release the remaining lots, that's probably not going to happen, but...
Yeah.
As far as a reduction, you'll have to have evidence of that because we won't have anything else.
Right.
We won't have any collateral after that.
No, I'm leaving the bond in.
You're asking for a reduction, though, you said.
Reduction for the work we've done. Okay, for an example, okay, with the curb in, we'll be requesting the bond for the curb and not the entire bond. If we put the sidewalk in, it'll...
Right, and we also have the bond plus the two lots. So that's why, you'll have to have evidence to support your bond reduction, plus the lot, the lot release.
Right. But that's what we're trying to accomplish, okay, build it out, put the top coat on and we're done.
Okay. They'll discuss that at the December meeting.
You need a motion. I can make a motion.
Yeah, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to release lots four, six, and seven for White and Reservoir Estates.
Motion made by Mike Z.
Second.
Aaron.
Aaron. Aaron, second. Roll call vote, please.
Left Stevens' eye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zooker, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye. Jake Schulter, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you in December.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thanks, guys, for the agenda. Just curious if Mr. Frazier has any other items that he was here to discuss.
Yeah.
Ken, do you have anything else on the agenda that you're here for us to discuss?
If there's any questions with regard to state of the Wallem Lake, I would be here if there's any questions to Flying Goose or Deer Crossing Estates.
Okay, I'll discuss them.
So he has several.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just for the decision. See if you can release her early.
Through the chair, so it's known. I did do Mulligan.
Okay. And you submitted it to Chris?
Mulligan. Did the Mulligan.
A Mulligan. Okay, and that was in the town clerk's office?
Yeah, I did that a week ago, so.
All right.
The Mulligan.
7:15 PM public hearing, continue McIntyre Land Inc., definitive applications for a definitive subdivision plan, Peter Michael Business Park, 100 Davis Street, possible votes. Going to pass this over to the vice chair and recuse myself.
Great.
You ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Matt, do you have thoughts on this?
Sir, at our last meeting, we were awaiting two items. One was a follow-up review from our peer review consultant, which we did receive. They did not have any further concerns with the review. The second item you guys asked me to do was prepare a decision and share that decision with the applicant. We've done that, and we both concurred on the language of that decision. Decision is here with our chairperson now. Some of the items that I'll read off just for the board, a lot of our decision is mostly formality and a lot of standard conditions. The conditions that I discussed at our previous meeting have been added to this decision in addition to the two revised waiver requests that were added. That was the installation of utilities and the driveways waiver that was for the real lot. Other than that, it was the sidewalks and the trees, which they already decided. The conditions I had discussed was the, I'm sorry, these are all very standard. The only thing that was different here is, oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to elaborate on one thing, is phasing. And with constructions for subdivisions, phasing is an important part of our projects, making sure that the sites are not clear cut to the, to the ground in their entirety. So the phasing plan that would be coming forward in the future would be for phase one, the road only, and it's right away and it's stormwater management systems. And then I understand future lots are being developed as, as tenants are proposed, so then those would be brought forward. Could we please mute that?
Someone's in the hot tub.
Yeah, that needs to be removed. We're being video bombed.
Yeah.
Please remove this person. Thank you. Please remove that person and block them. Thank you.
You can see it.
Yeah, please, please remove this person. Thank you. Oh, there we go. There we go. Thank you. Great. Where was I?
The phasing and the road.
Thank you. So I just made sure that there was a phase one for just clearing the limits of the roadwork and the stormwater management. Other than that, I'd be happy to see if the applicant had any other things that they wished to add.
I'll just introduce myself, Tom McIntyre, the applicant, and Mark Allen as the engineer. He's up on the board. I don't think the one that was just there was him, but...
The hot tub?
Hi, Mark Allen, Allen Engineering. Just wanted to kind of go through the decision and back up. We kept everything that's happened since the last meeting. We did get a clean letter from Larry Krieger, the accounting engineer. We also submitted revised hydrology analysis, the final set of bylaws that were dropped out today for consideration. There were, just for your information, there were a couple of minor changes in conservation that are on those bylaws in your office. They, they just basically involved, I think, one of the wetland lines behind the drainage basin and showing some approximate wetlands across Route 16. So per conservation's request, we added some additional set of drainage control along Route 16 so that any, any silt that may come off the site will not go across the street and it's adjacent wetlands off-site. A couple of the conditions of approval that Matt had referenced, I just kind of, as far as housekeeping goes, and had touched on the fact of the phasing part of the project, this is a bit unique and that may not have been here at the consent of the project. So I just kind of want to point out a couple of the conditions that I think may need to be adjusted, one of which is in special conditions B, number three, and that is the phasing plan. In typical standard subdivisions, that is absolutely a bust where the lots can't be quizzed, the roads done. What we're doing with this project is this, this project is strictly for the road and that each individual lot, as they get built out, will have their own site plan, their own conservation permits. So it's going to be hopefully a neater, cleaner project, a little bit more paperwork on our end because we will have this, this particular subdivision has its own entity, and then each individual lot will have its own commercial site plan associated with it. So we don't think the phasing plan is necessary for just a 780-foot road with one drainage basin. So we just kind of want to streamline that in this decision language. Again, that was special conditions on B, three, that I think is duplicated on, on number 11, Subsection 11, which was on page six of 10, number 11, prior to the start of construction. Phasing clearly indicating the limits of work. Each phase must be submitted to the playing board. So we've given you that as this is just one, one aspect of this, of this development. So it's separate from the individual lots, they will be included in the future. And I think Tom may have some comments on the other items. And I can maybe talk about one other item is the utilities, section eight of page six. Also, the utilities, submitted utility plan has proven, this is by National Grid or other agency, must be provided to the board prior to the start of construction. And you may well know that generally takes four to six months to hear back from National Grid. We would like to start construction prior to that, and maybe the board would consider something along the lines of prior to binder course, prior to top coat, something along those lines to allow the applicant to begin construction. So I'll turn it over to Tom to have a talk on his other items.
Tom?
I was going to say, I don't really have much further. I just wanted to piggyback on the idea that this isn't a typical subdivision that I own all the land or someone owns all the land. It's going to be separately owned parcels. And that's why each, one owner might not decide to develop a lot for 10 years. I don't know, and that's, that's the concern with the basing. And that might require some adjustment on the, things like the covenants because of the multiple owners. We'll qualify to figure out exactly what that adjustment is, but whatever the board thinks is right, where each lot is going to be separately, separately phased and developed, not as a larger subdivision as the board's probably more accustomed to. So that's the only background on that.
And any comments on that?
I think both requests are reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah, just go with it. You're going to go and go through the chair, top coat, everything, the whole nine yards? Is what your game plan is?
Yeah, we're going to construct the road.
One on set.
If that's the case, yeah.
Yeah, I'll go with that. All right. Go with those changes.
Did we vote on the waivers yet?
There was only three waivers.
Four waivers.
Four waivers.
Four waivers.
Yeah, we discussed them at the last meeting.
Yeah, I remember discussing them. Did we actually move on them, no?
No. So we do need two votes this evening.
We did?
We do need two votes, one for waivers, one for decision. Okay. Awesome. Let me start off.
And it is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience who are aligned with questions or comments or concerns with this project?
I just have one other question. Do you have a specific or a kind of a timeline on start to finish?
On the roadway south.
Yeah, road, road.
I'll add one other thing is that it's part, there are a couple complicated purchase settlement agreements that have a lot of contingencies going each way. And I think we, it's going to require, I'll be back before this board for certain permits, site plans, things like. I think we're going to be, want to be a little further along in the process before we start actually putting it underway.
Well, we're looking to admit part of it, that's why I was just curious. I mean, you're not going to go and start it, wait six months and work on it, wait six months and work on it.
Oh, no, once we start...
It's going to be a deal where you start and you're just going to go.
Once we start, it'll be...
Okay.
So you're just waiting it out real quickly?
Yeah, yeah, once you get everything lined out.
Exactly. Trying to solidify the next steps.
Okay.
Very complicated purchase sale agreements going all around with the land, so...
No, that's fine.
It's not going to start tomorrow. It's not, you know, maybe not even this winter, but once we start, we will finish.
Waivers first.
If the board's all set and...
Like deliberation on that.
I'd like a motion to close the public, well, we want to vote on the waivers first or vote on them after we close it. We have to do that one way or the other. We can do it either way.
What's the standard?
Do you take a vote on the waivers?
Procedurally, I'd, I'd suggest motion to close and then your, then your waivers and, and then your decision, then your...
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded by Ernie. Seconded by Mike Z. All in favor?
Left Stevens' eye. Left Stevens' eye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zooker, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye. Jake Schulter, aye. Meeting, uh, hearing is closed.
Okay. Yep.
Waivers. I'll make a motion to approve the four waivers requested.
I'll second that.
First me by Ernie, second by Mike Z. Round the table.
Yep, Left Stevens' eye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zooker, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye. Jake Schulter, aye.
All right.[1564.12] Yep, needed a motion for a decision. With the edits. Motion to, motion to. Yeah, motion to approve, um, the definitive subdivision plan with the modifications.
Peter Michael.
It's Peter Michael Business Park at 100 Davis Street.
Second that motion.
Need by Left, second by Ernie, round the horn.
Left Stevens' eye.
Ernie Mark's eye.
Mike Hooker eye. Mike Hooker eye.
Aaron Sokrata. Jake Schulte.
Do you guys want to sign now or after? Uh, make it after.
Yeah.
After, and we'll get it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Good deal.
That's it.
Thanks, guys, appreciate your time.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you. Oh. Yes.
Just a matter of business, should, should the board vote on the conditions of approvals as amended?
We've voted on the plant.
And the next meeting to discuss.
I'm going to have that redrafted with those two modifications for the board to sign, they have a separate signature page, I can make those two changes, and then, and then, uh, pass the decision. No, it was, yeah.
It wouldn't hurt to vote.
So, in my motion with, with the ad, the, um-
Yeah, you made a motion with the-
With the added changes.
Okay.
The amendments, the amendments is what I called out.
No.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yep, thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Excuse me, could I ask, cause it's hard to hear, are you discussing the solar part tonight?
It's on our agenda.
Number two on our agenda, after the other.
If you're referring to-
Public hearings.
So, we, we're not discussing right now, but it is on the agenda to discuss.
Okay.
Thank you. Cool. All right. Where you got?
Ready going 7:30?
Is it 7:30? Yep, 7:30.
Okay, next item on the agenda, 7:30 PM, public hearing, continuing to Cooperstown Road Realty Trust, application for a special permit and a definitive subdivision residential compound, Hawk Hill Farms, 768 and 772 Northwest Main Street.
He's on.
Possible votes.
Yeah, he should be there.
Yeah, he's on.
Is there anyone here to present this project? Jude?
Yeah, it's on here, Jude Gobbin.
Hey, Jude.
What, so do you wanna give us an overview of the progress that you've made?
Yep, absolutely, um, we did significant progress on this project. The last time we were before the board, there were some, um, questions about drainage and the adequacy of the drainage and the roadway safety, the accuracy of the slopes of the road, and to clear out some of the lot, um, the lot, we've done that, we've submitted the, um, progress prints or prints to the grades, they reviewed them in that comments, they had some minor comments. Can I share my screen, please?
Yep.
Can you share a screen?
Yeah, you should be able to share.
I don't know if she's-
Let us, let us know, let us know if it doesn't work, Jude, give it a shot.
Uh, it says it's the most disabled.
Yeah, there we go. Hold on. Oh, yeah, there you go. I think I'm going.
Here we go, Jude. There we go. All right. So, we were asked to clean up these lots and make them lots, not parcels, and show you what we were actually going to do, so that's what we've done. We started with one lot, as soon as you come into the residential compound, and then there are four other lots that are serviced by the road also. We just continued on existing, uh, lot lines, and we lined everything together, and took the mess and quickly straightened it out. Um, grades seemed to make sense again, they had some comments about areas and stuff like that, that was just an inadvertent layer that we turned on and sent to them, so we cleaned that up. The, the drainage, this term, the drainage was in mind, but we've now still wanted to put on that to meet stormwater standards, and everything seemed reasonable. We do have, if you guys can see this, I tried to get just some sort of a color drawing so you can actually see what's happening up there, so the proposal is to widen the existing culvert that's there now, it's very, it's 16 feet to 18 feet in spots, mostly 16 feet wide, we're proposing to widen it out to 20 feet so fire trucks can get in and out, and we put a turnaround at the end here so that the, for the fire department requirement where we wanted to, did more of a T turnaround, we want more of a circular turnaround, so we provided that in accordance with the dimensional regulations. We did provide some stormwater inside the center of the cul-de-sac, and that fills up and discharges out, um, down the property. The other piece that we have is this from the high point here on the road, it all tips towards the inside to a riprap swale, and then crosses under the road with a culvert to maintain the existing drainage pattern. Right now, this kinda slopes down, but it's cross-sloped towards the left-hand side, and everything kinda drains down to, you know, low point, and it discharges in relatively same area. So, we tried to mimic the, uh, where the water was going, we just tried to, you know, stabilize it, hold it, and mitigate the stormwater, but it does not cause erosion or flooding downstream. So, we met the brake post for the flow rates and the volume of water, um, by having the, widening the driveway out. We also, which was quite a concern last time, was, um, we didn't want any water going out into the street like it does now. Currently, it kinda rides down the center of the road, ends up going across the street and down into the swale. So, what we proposed to do is tip all that water to the inside of the property, and collect it in a riprap swale, and then direct that swale down to the existing culvert, and then under the road so that it doesn't come across the road and wash out.
Better than what's there?
So, those are the, those are the big changes that we made, and since the last update, we had a lot of clarification, and just getting back up to the road.
Through the chair.
Um, we do have, we did send one letter from the director, this resident here, oh, no, sorry, this resident here who signed the letter in support of the waiver of understanding what the implications are. The other butter was hesitant to sign something, had some more questions and concerns, and, um, we haven't received a, a letter for a waiver acceptance from him.
Hey, Aaron, did you have some?
Through the chair. Jude, what, what is the, the maximum slope pitch of the actual driveway? Looks like it drops about 30 feet over the left, but we don't know what that is.
Give me a second. The maximum slope is 12% for this area here, where this is where it was existing from.
Sorry.
This, the second, the first driveway on the left, it's 16% from there down to where it flattens out around, um, sorry, station 350, and we're proposing to come in and add a significant amount of fill, um, to make that road 12%. It starts out, the first, uh, 300 feet, 350 feet, it starts out at 5%, and the requirements are no more than 6%, so we made that for the, the entrance to the roadway, the staging area, it's called. And then we go up 12% till we hit that first driveway, which is here, and we get, tie that back, that driveway back in, and then it's relatively flat, you know, 1.9% to a little bit over 2% to the cul-de-sac.
That's, that's fine, right?
That's all right.
No comments from fire or police?
Yeah, any-
Well, we had, um, we sent out our request for opinions, I didn't see anything.
Jude, excuse me again, through the chair, did, did you send out anything to the fire police? Obviously for the cul-de-sac, you did, for the turnaround, but as far as the grades and then getting up with snow and ice and percentage-
Yeah, the town, the town would have done that, and Matt can speak to that, right?
He's got one.
We sent that to them, um, Matt and I have been in a bit of confusion about who's sending what to the fire department. We did reach out to the fire department today through an email and sent them plans, and they sent back, um, a bunch of requirements immediately to me, and I didn't see any requirements. He didn't comment on it, he just sent out things immediately to me, but I read through it and read everything, you know, the width of the driveway, it being stable, can't have too many sharp curves, so we've got vertical curves in there so the fire, the fire truck doesn't bomb out. So, he didn't say he was approving it, but he sent out some recommendations that were highlighted that, based on my review, with this current design.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I, I did see that response from the fire chief as well. I, I'd appreciate if the board would allow me to convene with the fire chief, go over the plans together possibly with Mr. Gobbin together, and make sure that those requirements are met altogether. And the only reason I asked for that, and this is additional things that I think need to happen also before we come to a conclusion with this project, which I think a draft decision would be an idea as well.
Okay.
Are you meeting with the highway superintendent also?
Yeah, so obviously, I'm late to the table on this one, and I'd love to meet with anyone in our tech review group that, that, that would like to make comments on this. If that's already been done, I'm not aware of it, but-
My concern, through the chair again, my concern, um, at, at the beginning of your, the road, where you said you were constructing a riprap swale, and then deferring the water to the existing culvert out on the public way, driveway? Are there any calculations on what that flow would be, or if it's gonna be increased? It is an old culvert, and it may require some maintenance if you're gonna increase the flow to it.
Correct.
If, like, the drainage calculation is based on what's there, 12-inch pipe that was supplied to grades, we, we met, we looked at what the flow was going to that, and what's going there now, and what's gonna go there before, and it seems adequate to handle that, whether it's collapsed in the middle of the road, I can't speak to that, but the pipe capacity is adequate.
All right.
That's what it was originally intended for, was to drain this, it's just that, because it was a gravel road and it was, it was material, it kind of, the water kind of seeks its own root instead of just going out to the street.
Okay. Just through the chair, Jude, do you plan on just paving the apron of it, and then the remainder will be gravel, or are you planning on asphalt paving the whole?
The proposal is for the, the staging area, the first 40 feet to be asphalt, the two minutes concrete.
Okay.
And the rest is gonna be either star pack or, or dense gravel.
Okay, all right, let's get penetration. Uh, just another question, you, you mentioned about, uh, the pipe going across the roadway, the culvert, uh, what's the size of that pipe going across?
12-inch.
12-inch, okay.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna probably, yeah, okay. Yeah, I think as long as highway and fire, your view?
Through the chair, I'm glad to see you're gonna stop the water going across the road, 'cause that's a big problem right now. But the two other main concerns I have that have been brought up more than once is about the landlocked parcel on the backside, which even Ernie's brought up before. Has there been any discussion or any movement going forward on that aspect? And the second part of my question, if you don't mind, is about the butter, right down there where it's only a few feet instead of a 30-foot area between the driveway and his property line, which was allowed many years ago, which I think was understood and was no problem. But now, where you're adding more houses, that's more headlights, and the owners at this time have gone in and thinned that whole area out. So, it's like nothing being there right now whatsoever. I mean, I drive by the place every day to and from work, so I, I see it. Um, so, we're allowing a non-30-foot buffer, but yet, we're not offering any kind of shelter from headlights. Has discussion or anything been brought up about that kind of stuff?
No, there has not been any discussion, no, not at all.
I think it needs to be addressed big time because you're asking for a huge waiver right there on not having that 30-foot buffer.
I was up there on site the other day, and I was looking at it too, and I asked the questions about how it was thinned out and stuff, and the applicant, I believe, when I was there tonight, they indicated that because the power lines go through there, that, that part is maintained and thinned out through the years. They did look at it for the potential for some sort of mitigation, for some sort of fence, maybe a stockade fence, but that hasn't been discussed. That's something the board wants to entertain and do to concern and talk about it right now, but that has not been previously discussed.
Okay. Well, you understand where, at least I'm coming from, as far as, I mean, it was allowed way back when, 'cause I think there's, what, two houses up there right now?
Correct.
So, you, you have so many cars, which is no big deal. Now, you go and you double that, or double that plus, it's a whole different entity. You're changing the whole scheme of things of what it was originally built as and for many years ago. Um, and I, I don't know, at least as far as I go, I have a little bit of an issue with that.
So, the whole-
There's not been done to deal with headlight, glare, and all that kind of stuff.
The whole project pretty much hinges on this waiver being granted.
Yeah.
For the required buffer of vegetation, and I'm not sure if, um, this letter from Ronald Anderson was read into the record, but I can do that right now from August 16th, 2021, and it was stamped in August 24th, 2021, uh, to the Town of Douglas Planning Board regarding Hawk Hill Farms, 768, 772 Northwest Main Street. I'm writing this letter to the planning board about my concern with the proposed road buffer zone along my property line. I feel the board needs to take into consideration the legal buffer zone requirement for this size project. A board member at the July 22nd, 2021 public hearing mentioned the existing road is already too close to the property line, given the size of the proposed project and the major improvements being done to the pitch and elevation of the road, I feel moving the road away from my property line to its legal setbacks is a reasonable request. I will decline signing a waiver if one is presented to me. If the board would kindly read this letter at the continued public hearing on August 26th, 2021, at 7:30 PM, that would be greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Ronald Anderson, 774 Northwest Main Street, Douglas, Mass. So, um, yes, I'm unsure if it was actually, it was submitted, I'm not sure if it was actually read into the record, so we're gonna make it part of the record, and I think that we need to, uh, get something in writing on the agreement for the vegetation buffer. Jude?
When was that, when was that?
It was August 16th, stamped in August 24th, and we did discuss it on our-
Yeah, we've had it before.
Our August meeting, the month of August meeting, and it was pretty important that, um, because this roadway is very close to the property line, that they authorized it with a written, uh, permission, like we do for earth removal.
I can, I can say that I, this is the first I've heard of this here.
I think it was within the time that there were multiple continued hearings. It was like the summer-
It was the last little applicant, so we didn't know-
Also didn't have staff.
Hmm?
Also didn't have staff, there was transition occurring, so-
Yeah.
Could have fell through.
So, that is part of the record.
Hmm.
Um, so, I believe that they are here tonight, so we can hear from them, um, but this is, um, you know, there needs to be some mitigation proposed. Do you have any mitigation right now planned? I don't see anything on the plan.
No, I was under the impression that Adam Butter had a few questions, and the other one signed it, so this letter and this request is new to me, so-
Okay.
Okay.
Absorb it, or the, you know, the applicant, I think, is there, she can speak to that if she would like to.
Hear the applicant.
We need to address the landlocked parcel also, you know, that's beyond my control too.
Okay, all right. Um, board?
Excuse me.
What?
Through the chair. So, a mechanical buffer could also be, the fence, things like that, is some option, I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying it's-
I think we're open to anything that the butter is in agreement with.
Correct.
We just need it in writing.
If, if they're there, then let's have that discussion now, right?
We will in one moment, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
But I will say, thanks to the chair for that water design, if that culvert can handle it. I mean, that has been a bad area.
Yep.
Real bad.
I saw it, I saw it with-
You've seen it with your own eyes, you know.
Yeah, I, I saw it, I was there, I talked to the guy across the street too, so, yeah, I wanted to help that whole situation out, it shouldn't be poor enough to vote like that, if you have the opportunity to fix it, so.
I thank you for that.
Yep, for sure.
Board, any other comments, questions on this?
No, just-
I think there's three outstanding items at this point.
Yeah, the landlocked parcel is a big, big deal with me also.
Mm-hmm.
So, this buffer zone-
Same with me.
In the landlocked parcel.
And the fire team.
That's the two, that's the two major-
I concur with Ernie.
Okay. Jake, anything? Hi, this is a public hearing, anyone here in the audience for this project? Name and address, please, for the record.
Anderson, 774 Northwest Main Street. I'm here about the buffer zone, obviously, I'm not too concerned with the front entrance way, it's more back, or it comes through both of my property, so I'd like to see that much wider buffer zone, I'd like to see that 30 feet.
Is, um-
It's probably half that.
Yeah, is Jude, is that 30 feet available in that location?
Terran's challenge.
If we realign the road, sure.
Then you got straight through it.
We're to take advantage of the existing-
These.
Okay.
The existing car path.
Okay. Uh, so, what do you have for a dimension from the property line to the proposed roadway? I have a 21.63 for, um, the widest point, but what's the closest point on the backside where that drill hole was?
Put it on the screen?
Yeah, I'm gonna put it up. It's, currently it's 7.75, I believe. The white's not letting me see it. The car, if there might be, yeah, maybe on that side, so that line right there is a roadway line, it's 775.
Yeah.
This is the existing proposed edge of here, here, maybe a couple of foot, maybe half a foot, but other than that, it's, well, 12 to 14 feet away from the edge of, or edge of travel lane, I guess.
Okay, thank you, so you're about 14 feet?
From, yeah, from edge of travel lane to the property.
Mm-hmm.
That 775 represents the, the property right away, like the property line.
Uh, so, the stack, the rules are a buffer zone of not less than 30 feet in width of indigenous vegetation separating the- indigenous vegetation separating the common private way from any pre-existing residential lot line. Okay.
Can I just add through this area where the pinch point is?
Yep.
That's where, the reason why the driveway is where it is is because it's a significant amount of ledge that goes up through that to the driveway. If you can see this kind of knob through the corridors, if you push this back this way, it's going to be a lot of plastering and a lot of chipping or hammering away the edge to move the soul around significantly. If we come up with a screening solution, I think that would be better and achieve the objectives that the abutters are discussing tonight, but I'm not the applicant, but the abutter.
Right, so we have to have some communication with the abutter, but are you open to a screening method?
What kind of screening?
Um, we, we don't want to suggest anything, but generally, I, I think that Jude, the owner, needs to speak with the abutter to come up with a, an agreeable solution. Because we're not, I'm not going to recommend it and a waiver on it, because it isn't our regulation, so it needs to be-
Addressed.
-addressed before the next meeting.
In the land.
Um, yeah, in the landlock and the fire chief stuff. But I, what I would suggest is, yeah, either vegetation and a solid fencing or-
I think, Chair, I think that the applicant and this, this abutter have to hash it out.
Yeah.
Discuss. They come up with something that they're both willing to accept.
Is there another problem with the front?
Yep, the 21 and a half.
The custom off the hill, down the hill, a good pace. I'm in my backyard, he is sitting in the backyard. You know, the only thing that I feel safe is with that wall there.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
Yeah, I think, yeah, between the two, you should sit down and hash something out that you can come to a compromise with.
Yeah, I think it's-
And even if, like through the chair, even with Jude involved, because he might know some good ideas and suggestions, Jude, landowner, and yourself, whatever, have some sudden proposed and worked out, because, I mean, I'd have concerns, too, because you're more than doubling what's going on right now.
So is the board amendable that if we come up with a solution that's acceptable to both parties, that the board will obtain the waiver?
We like, yeah, we like something in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything in writing.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That, I would, yeah, I would say, yes, that they can come to an agreement.
If there's a full agreement between all parties involved, I mean, I'd have no, no issues with that. On this aspect, on this, on this here one aspect.
Item. Because the alternative is that you're going to move the road over and hammer away on a bunch of rock, you mean?
Instead of making it look pretty and-
Correct, for X amount of time.
Or establish drive.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that could be irritating to the neighborhood and stuff like that, the amount of work there, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, I think it's just a good discussion offline.
Okay. Yes, name and address, please.
Meg Schlesman, I am the applicant. I am happy to address, my husband and I are certainly happy to talk to Ron about what he would be open to accepting in terms of some kind of remediation.
Go ahead.
Happy to do that. Certainly happy to talk if you have other concerns. We have no problem with that. I can address the landlocked portion of land behind us that's been mentioned numerous times. That matter was litigated years ago. We were sued by those people and they lost in court, so we will not be granting any kind of access to them, to the property.
I think it's in our bylaws, though.
That's what I thought.
Could, yeah, could you submit some information for our council to review?
I also think it's in our bylaws for any developments and stuff like that.
Yeah, this is prior to the proposed development.
Correct. Correct. It, when you, doesn't matter, when you entertain-
I would defer to town council on this question.
Correct.
Since there is some court litigation.
Well, yeah, versus our bylaw.
Happening. And then you're good with the fire chief's?
Sorry, I'm not with the fire chief, because I, why, I'm not understanding why today he received a copy of this request to look at and turn around for tonight's meeting.
Yeah, we're not ready to vote anyway, so it's really a moot point, but have you reviewed his request? Okay, okay. We don't have them either, so, yeah, we'll have to see at the next meeting if we can meet those.
Just through the chair, I think what Matt, you know, our planner, you know, recommended was, was that him and Jude and the fire chief sit down and review the plan.
Yeah, and highway.
And highway.
Please.
Very easy and formal, you know, discussion, I think.
Okay. Name and address, please.
Travis McCullough, I own the 40 acres of land behind the property. As far as the litigation goes, that was actually, that wasn't me, I purchased it after the litigation. That was my job, existing, right away they had access to before, and he did lose the litigation, but again, I'm not, I wasn't the owner during that litigation, and this development's a whole new development.
Yeah, I would defer to town council on the standing and if it runs with the land or whatnot.
Yeah.
But you, yeah, you're presumed abutter, so we would have to get some kind of, some kind of answer on that, so before we speak on it.
As far as what, previous litigation?
Yeah, any, yeah, anything to do with that landlocked and our regulations, whether they apply to that parcel, and I have no idea what the case says.
Correct.
So we don't know anything about that. We're not attorneys.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know the details on how that might work. It might be like a house you put in an addition, you need to come up to this certain code. Now, whether that, something like that applies to this or not, we don't know. That's why town council, we'll talk to him and see what, what the real deal is, because we don't know.
Gotcha.
Yeah, meeting our regulations.
Correct.
Yeah, it's just like I said in the previous meetings, probably two or three meetings ago, it's supposed to be being taken into consideration and then it just gets, it wasn't ever considered and brought in plans, and it just seems like it's kind of a lot of, you know, hanging around.
Well, this is the first that I'm hearing that there was litigation previously.
No, the-
Yeah, the landlock.
Yeah. In, yeah, of that particular parcel, so we'll have to, Jude, we'll have to figure that out before the next meeting.
You have another question?
Yeah. Hmm? Meg?
Yeah, may I respond?
Sure.
So I, is it possible for me to meet with town council also to discuss this matter? Because I, I don't understand, is it a requirement? Is it a request? Is it?
Not yet.
I don't understand the legality of the request.
It's in our rules or regulations.
Right, that we have to consider it, or we have to provide-
If it's not met, then we would need to issue a waiver, need to grant a waiver on that condition.
For any landlocked piece of property that is near mine.
No, so just through the chair, for any particular project, not just yours, any particular project that has a landlocked parcel, when it goes in with a subdivision or some type of project going in there, and that parcel's landlocked, I believe our bylaws is that we have to grant 50-foot access to that landlocked parcel, is what I believe our bylaw said.
In the form of an easement.
In the form of an easement.
Right.
Too aggressive, so.
First I've ever heard of this.
It, yeah, we had to do it on the, the last few projects that come before us. So, again, something that town council can look at and stuff like that and review and get back to us.
It's also something this board could consider for a waiver. So that's the reason it's in the bylaw and all, anything in our subdivision rules are, can be considered as waivers, but if it's something that needs to be required on the plan and this board's requesting it, then it should be on the plan. But unless you're requesting a waiver, that should also be on the plan, the request for said waiver.
As I said, I think it's the first I've ever heard of it, so I would have included it if I had known about it.
All right, I'd say. Fair enough.
Yes, one more follow-up question?
Is there a limit to the lots that can be created off this common private way?
10.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, it's 10, is the math.
So if you propose now, more could be added later?
For the residential compound, it's 10.
It's 10 with a residential compound?
I'm pretty sure.
Yes.
Any modification of such plan would require a new public hearing, new advertising.
If I'm going to agree to something closer, more, lots can add in the future, then there's no sense in agreeing.
Through the chair.
Could you say your name and address for the record, just for the minute ticker?
Ronald Anderson.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
As it was through the chair, as it was just brought up, we'd have to go through this whole same process. You just can't go and add more houses. Like, what's being proposed in front of us is what's going to be there.
But if I'm going to agree to a road being proposed-
Right, but you'd also have a right, again, to come back in front of the board-
It would only be these lots.
Make a change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just through the chair, I believe this is an updated revision. I think the initial concept was more lots than this, so this has been reduced down to four lots. Just, so this is the, and I think once this, if, you know, this should be approved and stuff like that, then it basically, you know, reduces the chances of additional lots being created off of it.
I think once the road is in, then chances of getting created, that lots are created.
I don't know how much land.
Sorry.
Hold on, hold on.
Sorry, through the chair, if you want, you'd have to be recognized first. No talking to each other, please. So what you would be agreeing to is the plan as it is right now. So I would, if you were to sign something, it would just be for those lots.
That's it. Okay.
And we would, if there was another proposed extension, then we would be requesting the same exact thing.
The letter I received proposed a full lot.
Is it this parcel here?
Residential compound.
But now it's five lots, so I'm not, I'm more confused with that, too.
Which one? There may be an existing one, I'm not sure. Jude, how many total lots are you proposing?
Five.
Five, five new lots.
Well, one of them has, through the chair, one of them has different frontage, right? Frontage on-
Northwest Main.
On Northwest Main?
Correct.
Yeah, that, that's one of those lots.
That's the parcel that we need to break off so that we can create an A and R frontage lot.
Right.
Existing parcel that we have.
Is, is that the fifth lot, right there?
No.
That would be a-
That's, that's lot six, but the lots that are serviced from the new common driveway are five lots.
Okay.
But number 768 is existing. Lot number two, 768, is an existing house. I'm looking for the number of vacant lots being added.
Three, three vacant lots, two are existing that are being reconfigured. So there'll be three additional lots-
Three.
-off of this piece of property.
Okay.
The letter I received is a full lot, that's what I was going to say.
Less is good.
Yeah, yeah, less is good, and we're, yeah, it's, it's morphing, yeah.
So lot one, where would the driveway come, that one, come off of?
Um.
Common driveway?
Lot one is from Northwest Main.
Yeah. It's fronted on Northwest Main.
Lot one's frontage is off of the common private-
Where would the driveway?
Where would the driveway be located? Um, this is not, we can't really see it. You zoom in, please.
Open the right sheet.
Lot one would get access to approximately right here, if you can see what it appears.
Yeah, off the common driveway.
So you are gaining your frontage off of Northwest Main, but there's no access for the roadway, for the driveway?
The frontage from lot one is being created from the common driveway, this whole line here is from, not a frontage here.
You didn't move Northwest.
So it's part of the residential compound, this is being created, created by the resident that we're creating.
Just through the chair, so, so Jude, I just noticed it, so what you do is you have a sliver, you have a sliver along Northwest Main, if you move your mouse over, you have a sliver, right, a frontage.
That's being added to the other lot.
Right there, yeah, yeah, can you move your mouse, yeah, yeah, so there's a sliver, if you move, pull it down a little bit, there's a sliver to the north of that, right, that you're showing, along the roadway.
Yes.
Yeah, so there's a sliver cut, which, okay, so that's, that's just what I think we missed, or, you know, I missed, thinking it was access off of Northwest Main because there's a sliver cut.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If I can, the other lot will be, see lot six?
Correct.
That one's going to be off Northwest Main, but not-
And that's not included in the application.
This is a frontage lot.
Right.
It's not part of the-
Application.
Right now, the parcel part of the residential compound, so you only need 100 feet of frontage, you're at about 150 feet, so that's all lot one and right-of-way, little sliver of lot five, all create 100, 150 feet that you need along Northwest Main Street in order to do the residential compound. So the extra piece that we're carving out is a parcel, so once those five lots are created, and then come back for an A and R, parcel up with frontage off of Northwest Main Street.
Yep.
Because they also own lot seven.
Um, just through the chair, Jude, Jude, what's the pro, what's the point of the sliver right now? Because it, it causes-
Is it sliver?
No, no, up, up, where your mouse is, go to Northwest Main, right there, you, you have a, no, down.
Sliver.
It's like, it's like two feet wide.
It's a splinter, that you got right below the word Northwest Main.
Public variable whip under there.
Right underneath there.
Going across that, parallel.
Right there, yep, you got it.
It's like, it's a random line.
That's just a drafting line.
Yeah.
It's nothing.
Okay.
It's frontage, there's nothing else going on there.
All right.
There's no guardrail or anything like that.
Right, no, I see what you're saying now, no, that's, that's just the line that's on the plan.
All right.
Did you put it there?
I thought you're cutting a splinter there for, for purposes of frontage.
Blocking frontage.
Yeah.
Now I see what you're asking, this is actually the frontage, right?
Okay.
You're thinking the same thing?
Through chair.
Yes?
Les, were you suggesting that why they're not, is there some impediment that they couldn't take the driveway and put it onto Northwest Main from lot one, instead of them coming out of their driveway and the headlights going towards the other property and all that?
That, that, yes, that was the question we asked, Jude, how come lot one can't be serviced off of Northwest Main?
Yeah.
Great.
Because your requirements say that it has, the driveways have to come off of the common private way.
This is a corner lot.
There is no, there's not enough frontage, there's not 200 feet of frontage on Northwest Main.
Okay.
Has to come off where the frontage is.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
What do you have for frontage on Northwest Main?
No, no, no.
I'm sorry?
What, what do you have for frontage on Northwest Main right now? What are you proposing? 200 and, it says 200.3 feet for parcel A, and then frontage for lot one is 442 feet on the private way. So.
He's got it there. No, he's got it there. That's, that's what we need.
Seems like it's sufficient on both.
Plus 83.
He's short.
What is it?
You have about 140?
83 plus 148, and then another 15 feet on here.
So you've got 240 feet.
Minus the roadway, public way.
So it's 98.52 plus 83.26?
No. Yes. That dimension goes from.
There to there.
Yeah, from here to right here.
180.
180. Okay. So he shuts, not enough, what kills it?
And the other.
So three others.
Yep.
It's, it's well in excess of 100 feet of frontage required.
Yeah, no, you're, you're, you're good, we're just understanding the math, so.
Got it.
Appreciate it.
Or we grant a waiver on the driveway location versus.
We could, so that's going on Northwest instead of going in the driveway. I mean, that would make, especially with Ledston, you've got to be careful of that curve coming up and over down in there too, for line of sight, because that's a.
That's a ditch all along there too, once it passes that driveway.
Yeah, once you get.
Drops.
Coming into Ledston there, you're coming up over that blind S corner.
Yeah.
And diving into Ledston.
Chicky road.
There's nothing to say, nothing to say we can't come in without, or come out of that driveway, you know.
Closer down.
Down, further down, closer so there's nowhere near that house. And granted, I know there's a house right across the street there too, where your stamp is. There's a house right there, so if you came in at a slight kitty corner, it might not be too bad.
No, if you came in kind of this narrow, maybe somewhere here, directed, directed towards the road.
Yeah, yeah, agree.
In the house, or the front yard.
Yes, yes. And if so, that'd be something, at least personally, I'd like to see the actual verbiage put in, anything that's signed, where, when that is done, that, that's where it will go.
I mean, we could have a physical barrier on the other side as well.
Yeah.
That there would be a temptation to get to the backyard. Megan, did you have something?
Yes, please.
A name and address, please.
Meg Schleskin, 717 Northwest Main Street. Can you tell me if other exceptions have been granted for similar roadways such as this?
Not without written permission. Historically, I would say. The past 12 years.
All right, so this is more.
Yeah, I mean, we always have to get the comments from fire and highway and stuff like that. Yeah, legal stuff, yeah. But it's come a long way, so it's. Yeah, I think it's beneficial for both parties to talk.
Sorry, one last public comment.
Yep, just one more thing, I have a bunch of, a couple maps, just to hand out, so you have an idea of a couple possibilities for some rightaways.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, submit them.
Thank you.
Can that, that a butter state which parcel we're talking about? You said it in here.
If it's the bottom left, if you see what the pipeline is, yep, go down a little more, just right there.
That's.
Yep.
This one?
Yep. And like I said, I have a couple drawn up on the satellite imagery and also on one of your plans of trails that already exist that are probably about anywhere from five to eight feet wide already. That will pretty much not impact any of the lots that are there, I mean, just as a proposal, you know what I mean?
So we'll submit into the record the two, the aerial photo as well as the map from McCollin. You can have one. Ward, do you want to see these?
Sure, I'll give, Ernie.
I'd like to give one.
Thank you.
Want a mic?
No, I'm good, I know where.
Well, we missed the other one, I think, I'm not 100% sure, but I did read it in.
Some ideas.
It's all right, all right.
Okay, Ward, anything else?
No.
Okay. Applicant, you're ready to continue to December 9th with all the answers that we need? Jude? Representative, anybody?
Yep. Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to continue. Yep.
Can I just, I would really like to be a part of any discussions that are had about this matter until this, while things are getting decided, because there's things that I'm unaware of, that Jude's unaware of, that, you know, we, we come to this meeting every time trying to get this thing decided. And so I just feel like I would really like to be involved in these discussions to be as fast as possible.
Yeah, of course, so we have on record Cooperstown Road Realty Trust as the applicant. Were you signing the applications?
I think, isn't that how we did it, Jude?
Yes, yes.
And you have your email address, so you should be notified of any correspondence.
I, I've never been notified of correspondence.
I'm sure.
I guess.
I also have not been working here since your first public hearing, so now that I'm here, I'll be happy to communicate with you all matters.
Yeah, so.
I also mean like town council, or there's a meeting with the fire department, or the, or the city department, or whoever, I just, I feel like we're at a critical point in this, and that we just need to understand what our rights are and what decisions need to be made.
I will say this, is that town council is our legal counsel, which is privileged information. They're here to advise us, not necessarily applicants, so town council, the information is for the board.
Very good, yeah, and the application should have your name and your email address, right? You signed the application for this? Okay, so as a trustee.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I don't have a copy of your application, so whatever we have as a contact email, then we'll send that along and make sure everyone's notified.
Thank you, plan on doing a pair review.
Through the chair, it's always, it's town hall too. It's always, anything that we have is available to anybody that wants it.
That's right, public record.
Yeah.
If I get answers to these questions through the chair.
Things get submitted, and then we find out at the hearing. Unless we find something, call and check, if something new is, we wouldn't know.
Okay.
Chair, I'd also like to reiterate that I am new to this job, but I do tend to communicate very well with applicants on all matters, and I have notes of everything here this evening, and as I do get progress on these things, you will both be notified.
Yep, thank you.
Sounds like a deal.
In all fairness to the board, we've had.
Nobody.
Information come in, but this has been continued so many times, that whatever information is coming, we can't discuss it anyway, so it's put on the file, it's put in the file.
Correct.
Look at it, but it's.
We're going to weigh in on it.
Right, if it's a request to continued hearing, we shouldn't be.
We weren't intending that.
Discussing any new matter.
Correct.
On that hearing at that time. Yeah.
And I agree with what he said, this has been continued so much, things have shown up. I mean, it's not, it is what it is, so.
Did I request a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion.
Was it motioned?
No, I'll make a motion to continue Cooper Town Realty to December 9th.
At 7:45?
At 7:45.
Second.
Motion made by last second by Mike G. All is a favor, roll call.
Steven's eye.
Freddie Mac's eye.
Mike Croco eye.
Mike's hooker eye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Yep.
Thank you, have a good Thanksgiving, everybody.
Good to see you, Jude.
Thanks, Jude. You too.
Next item on our agenda, 7:45 PM, public hearing, Gregory's application for special sign permit. Special permit for a sign, or a signed special permit.
Yeah.
303 Main Street, possible votes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before we invite the applicant forward, I just want to, for the record, note that this is the first time that the town of Douglas has had this type of sign permit. According to the general bylaws, these signs are generally under the jurisdiction of the select board. And the way that this application went was there was two items, also, sorry, sidebar, I'd like to invite Mr. Ken Fraser to the table again.
Come on over.
But ultimately, a determination was made by the building commissioner, that went to the selectmen for appeal and was overturned, but according to the general bylaws, after it goes to the selectmen, and only for an animated or flashing sign, a permit is required from the planning board. Doesn't say what type of permit, so we created an application and a policy, and now we did notify a butter to send a legal notice, and that is here before us today. So this doesn't follow standard procedure for special permits, subdivisions, or anything of the like, so this is our own policy to decide this evening.
So we're calling it a special sign permit?
Animated or flashing, according to the general bylaw, but I would hope that the applicant give us more information on that.
This is not a special permit, this is a special sign permit.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Legal notice of public hearing, might as well read that before we get rolling. Name of applicant, Gregory's, name of owner, Gregory Pantos, date and time of public hearing, Thursday, November 18th at 7:45 PM. Subject matter of the hearing, the applicant is requesting approval from the Douglas Planning Board for an animated sign, project site and location, the project is located at 303 Main Street, Douglas Mass, Assessor's Map 163, parcel 116. Place of public hearing, Douglas Municipal Center, Resource Room 29 Depot Street, Douglas Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas Mass, 01516. In Wednesday, November 10th, 2021 issue.
Madam Chair, I believe their, members of their team are on Zoom.
Okay, wonderful. Who will be presenting for the applicant?
Great.
And you can come on down.
I don't know who's taking record of individuals, so I was going to have the business part along.
Great, and name and address for the record, please.
Sure, thank you. My name is Benjamin Barr, B-A-R-R, I'm from 59 High Street in Gilbert, New Hampshire, so I took a little ride down today, and actually, I had dinner at Gregory's tonight. I haven't been to Douglas, but I've sat in front of a number of zoning board appeals and planning boards. This particular property is looking to get some, get the word out, what they do, you know, the last year's been a really challenging year for them, and one of the technology changes that has happened over the last decade or 15 years is digital signs. So digital signs started to become incorporated into retail businesses. Ironically enough, as I had dinner at Gregory's, I looked up the road, and the same technology is in effect in a simplified manner at the credit union. So a time and temperature sign is the same technology that we're proposing today. And our, our hope and expectation is that we get an approval tonight to run the sign very similarly to how that time and temperature changes. So unfortunately, 15 years ago, when codes were written for signage, sometimes they were written as animated or flashing signs, because marquee signs at theaters flashed and moved. And there's obviously an expectation with animated signs in Times Square and Las Vegas. This applicant is looking at a very simple sign. And scale wise, the sign's only two foot tall and five foot wide, so we're trying to stay within that same landscape of the existing projecting sign, but we want to bring into an electronic element. Help wanted is a huge challenge for small business today, and they'd like to be able to do that to the community, you know, bring in applicants within their community, and talk about what they offer, specials. And there's a vast amount of people that drive up and down this roadway every day, and the population turnover is, is pretty significant in the nation. Almost 10% of the people on the roadway are like me, I'm from New Hampshire, I'm driving through, I don't know where I'm going to go to dinner or lunch, but, you know, signage makes an impact. So instead of having changeable letters, we'd like to propose something digitally. The expectation is that we fall along with state DOT code within Massachusetts, so the sign would not animate, there would be no motion, it would be an instantaneous change, just like it changes from time to temperature at the bank, the sign would change the same way. Now, this sign would have the opportunity to put some pictorial elements to it, so they could put a picture of a grinder and a price, or the special today is a pizza and the slices. The sign would operate the same way that that time and temperature sign would operate. The organization I work for is almost 90 years in business. We were a clock and indicator company, but now we're a major provider to digital signs all over the nation, and we want to make the sign safe and effective. So they want to, they want to put the message up there that says that pizza slices are going to be a certain amount at lunchtime, they might want to promote a grinder tonight for dinner, and be able to advertise what they offer, or have a help wanted, you know, advertisement instead of putting it on indeed. So they want to, they want to refresh and rebrand their location. Our hope and expectation is that we could guide your, your board as far as how the sign could be run. Currently, the selectmen has said that they'd like to approve it with some stipulations on a review within 60 days, so we would love to have that permission by your organization as well. One of the biggest concerns for digital signage today is brightness. Our signs would automatically dim per the time of day, and, you know, I think that 60-day appeal or 60-day review would be, we like how it's running, maybe it's a little too bright for the area, or maybe it's not bright enough. One of the bigger challenges is sometimes there's stipulations put on it that it's not bright enough at night, you know, you have surrounding lights on that roadway, and, you know, you might have to have it a little brighter, you might have to have it at a comfortable level, and that's one of those things that could be reviewed in a 60, 60-day review. They're not planning on advertising any off-premise material, so they're not planning on advertising for other customers or other businesses, they just want to advertise for themselves.
So Matt, could you refresh the board on the bylaw? How it is written?
Yeah, so all it reads for us is that in addition to the selectmen's approval, a sign permit for animated and flashing signs is required from the planning board. That's it.
Okay, there's no conditions, it was just one sentence?
One sentence.
We didn't think we'd ever come to this day, did we? That was a long time ago when we wrote. I think that was, what, 10 years ago?
Yeah.
I think Mike missed out on the second page that was supposed to be attached to that.
We did have town councils assistance on that.
Through the chair, I'm going to say one thing.
Word questions.
I know like Oxford High School, they just pulled one up. I mean, they just put it up, I think, two weeks ago. It is the wave of the future.
Yeah.
I think this would be a way to kind of see how it goes as a start. I mean, it's on Main Street, it's downtown.
So we have to assume that every single person is going to want an animated sign after this?
Right.
So we should probably, number one.
Review our sign bylaw.
Revise it.
Right, but I mean, what's presented in front of us right now.
Yes.
I think going with the grace period, things of that nature, and I agree, the biggest concern is one place over on Route 16 and Webster. When you drive by it at night, you think the sun's on.
It's a new permit.
It's crazy how bright they got it, and that's no good.
Yeah, I mean, I've been with the company.
I understand. The West Planning Board even in general, by the way.
The biggest challenge is if the code doesn't identify proper brightness.
Brightness.
At night.
Yep.
Then you're going to see a big eyesore on the road, and people feel like they have to put sunglasses on.
It is, yeah.
And, you know, that's one of the biggest challenges that I walk into when I sit in front of hordes and talk to, you know, let's talk to people that are rewriting their codes, because they've never done it before.
Probably increase.
Start, start a good platform, make sure that you can enforce it.
Right.
You know, on our software, at least our software, as far as our company's concerned, is you can actually see real time what the brightness of that sign is. But the sign brightness is with LED is different than what you would traditionally see. So we, we talk about nits. A lot of people talk about candles or lumens, so, you know, if you don't, if the enforcement isn't there for the applicant to be able to say, this is what our brightness level is, and if we want to drive down there at night and look at your software and say, this is the brightness level, then if you don't write it in the code and you don't, you know, enforce it, then, you know, you could have problems. And I, that's, that's my biggest challenge, even I squint at signs that don't operate correctly.
Yeah.
Just through the chair, what, what are you proposing for your display time?
We'd like to follow along with a five-second hold time, I mean, the, the bank or the credit union changes at three seconds. You know, it's a smaller sign, so it's not going to have a lot of, it's not going to have a lot of text and a lot of imagery on it. It takes about a second or second and a half to read a word, so if they have a five-word message out there, it's pretty comfortable. When it's all said and done, going by at 30 miles an hour, you're probably only going to catch a message anyway if you read a message. So it's pretty comfortable, state DOT, and for Massachusetts, I believe is at eight seconds, anywhere between five and eight seconds. They did a comprehensive study about eight years ago. So we're open to, open to it, you know, within that period that they allow for digital signs on the highway.
Just one, on the application though, it says frequency of message change in terms of.
Through the eight. I can answer that. So when the restaurant manager and I were going through this, we weren't sure what the frequency was going to be. So I put that on there.
If anything, the baseline should be when he's open, he's open, when he's not open, the sign's on. That's obvious. And it shouldn't be off. When you're not open, you don't need the sign on.
No. Your double sign's always hanging.
And saying work, and saying, you know.
It's like the bank, there's the bank.
Saying.
Okay, well, that's my, my second thought is the longer the frequency, the better. My second thought is the longer the frequency, the better.
Correct.
I think the police chief should give the chime on it because it is a congested tight area. People should not be using their phones and looking at their phones. They shouldn't text, but, you know, possibly their eyes are gonna be caught to a sign. I'm just putting it out there. Six-month approval's fine. Keep the other one in case, in case it has to come down, because I don't want it being a cry, in case we don't, nobody likes it, and.
It's already gonna stay, right? You're already gonna keep the top, your little picture?
Yeah.
You're gonna keep your existing name.
The name's just a smaller portion, two by five, which is the size of this table.
If I can through the chair, like I said, it's coming this way. I mean, everything you see now, you're starting to see more of it. The computer sophistication, the software, and the lighting, it's so easy to do now. They just run a program. So, I think this is a good baseline. I mean, Main Street's lit up anyways.
Yeah.
24 hours a day, it's lit up.
It may increase safety.
And it is Main Street, and it is Route 16, so.
Through the chair, I just want, I like the idea of the test period, see how it goes. I think we should revisit our sign bylaw because if we set a standard, then that standard will be what it is, and we're not gonna have somebody opening up down the street, another establishment saying, well, let's put our sign brighter than the one up the street.
Flashing.
So, I think that should be definitely part of revisiting our bylaw and.
Yeah, it is in the general bylaw.
Yeah.
So, that's the number one issue. So, gonna just be very careful here.
I don't have a problem with.
Just through the chair, I just wanna recognize Ken Fraser, the inspector, so you can.
Thanks, Loth.
The question I have with regards to that, you've got it down, it's two foot nine by five. Is that the digital sign plus the sign on top of that? Because those signs are two different sizes from what's a, it's the same-sized sign as what's on the side of the building in the Gregory sign, but if you look at the other sign, it's a lot larger.
Yeah, so the existing sign is a little smaller because you gotta have at least the letter size that we, when we surveyed and went by the sign. The Gregory's letters read well, they're not too small, and that's really the challenge nowadays with making signage effective, is the portion of this sign would be two foot by five foot.
What is the total sign?
The total sign is, it would bet on the applicant itself, maybe, and I'm with Watchfire, so I'm presenting on just the digital portion. I have to think that that portion may be 18 inches, anywhere between 15 and 18 inches.
Well, it's substantially bigger. I mean, you go by just the two visuals you have there with the Citco sign in the back that you can see it very clearly, and then on the digital sign, it's almost half gone.
Three by five.
Could you come a little closer? Yeah, so the total we would be voting on is three foot high by five foot wide.
Yeah, so that's 12 inches.
Of the digital or the total sign?
The total, total area is three foot by five foot. This portion would be two foot. That's a foot.
You can see how it brought a little bit of green over there.
Yeah, so the whole sign.
Is three.
So, we are voting three foot by five foot with 14 inch thick.
Yeah.
It's gonna be double-sided?
Entire double-sided, yeah.
Through the chair.
Yes.
These numbers I pulled right from the building permit that they applied for.
Okay.
Who's that?
These numbers I pulled right from the building permit that Jackie showed me.
Right, they're two foot nine.
Yeah, the three by five with the 14.
But that's the existing sign.
But the existing sign is, that's on the building now, is smaller than what they're proposing.
Correct. By about a foot, probably.
Did they apply that building permit?
This is the. It's over the night.
My concern, when I denied it originally, was a couple of things. One, it was over 15 square feet of sign now. It's hanging over the sidewalk. It is a digital sign. That is a heavily congested area. I just think that you're just, you're just putting more distraction out there.
That was.
And if you allow one sign to go in, and it's in the bylaw that it's allowed, just think in the future, which potentially will be down on Main Street.
Yeah, that was my first comment.
Right.
We have to assume that every pizza place that we have is going to want this. So, if I could just clarify, the total square footage of the sign is going to be no larger than 15 square feet.
Correct.
Cut.
We would love to have digital signs everywhere. The unfortunate part of it is, it doesn't happen. This is a big investment for the customer. So, everybody wants to have them, but then they unfortunately don't make the investment in them.
Right. Yeah.
If I can just clarify, though, on the bottom of the dimensions.
Two foot by five foot.
Yeah, two foot by five foot.
The top sign, one foot by five foot.
Why does that say?
Is this 29 inches?
Because we have a cabinet that holds it in, so there's, the viewable area is two foot.
So, what is the edge to the edge, to the edge to the edge?
Of the entire sign.
Of the entire sign. I don't care what's over there.
This portion is cabinet size. And how we calculate, how most zoning codes calculate their signage is viewable advertising.
We want signed sign.
So, the sign of the overall cabinet is two foot, five inches by five foot, three inches. The top section of the sign is 12 inches by five foot.
So, again, it's, so it's different than what you're asking for.
Yep, what was on the.
We're asking for a sign that is, is an advertising area of three foot by five foot. There, the advertising area of a sign, which that is what a sign is, where you have copy on it, is three by five.
If I can through the chair on this here, the reason being is, I could say I'm doing that, then add a 12-inch border all the way around the thing.
Right.
So, we're going by, see that picture?
Yeah.
What's the size of that picture with the frame? What we want to know.
Yeah, so if that is the case, then when we made the application out, normally we made the application out for viewable area. I'm sorry that we didn't follow along.
So, we, yeah, with our definition, we are voting on the 10 square feet of the sign will be LED message sign. Okay? So, a two by five portion will be illuminated.
Right. But the overall size of the sign.
Is not the definition that we made in the general bylaw for overall size. It would be the viewable.
Yeah, but that top part, that says, is also illuminated.
Madam Chair.
One is just motion.
Yeah.
I can clear, I can clear a lot of this up.
Okay.
All right, so, the selectmen having received Ken's original determination of the dimensions and the location of the sign over the right-of-way were two items that Ken had concerns with. The selectmen overturned that decision and voted to issue this 60-day permit. Okay, so those two items are pretty much off the table for us. Those have already been approved by the selectmen, okay? What we're looking at here is content, frequency, et cetera, and I think the way that I would make a recommendation here to support one of the items that Mr. Fraser brought forward is that if this is over the right-of-way, I would love to see if this keeps on after the 60-day period, some sort of waiver keeping the town away from any liability if anything were to happen to the sign and land on the right-of-way. But the display time, I don't have any issues with, but I think the board may want to consider mimicking the 60-day waiver, excuse me, the 60-day trial period to echo with the selectmen, and if the selectmen decide after 60 days they wish to take it down, then ours permit would reflect that also. I just think it's redundant for both boards to be reviewing this according to the general bylaw, but it was my opinion that because it reads that way, we needed to talk about it, but the original sign authority has made their termination. So, I think it's important for us to either mirror that.
I agree.
Or condition it as such.
I agree.
Just through the chair, I just, I'd probably prefer the eight-second over a five-second just because the amount of flashing there as well. So, a longer display is a better thing for the area, as well as for the business, because that way people can read it and see it, stuff like that.
Name and address, but if you want, you can say one thing quick.
For that message, you know, I need more than eight seconds, not only five seconds.
Hold on.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, yep.
Mark Morgan, the manager of Gregory's Restaurant.
Thank you.
I'm the owner, actually.
Okay.
Just like I'm saying, I need more than eight seconds of message, make sure that people can read that.
Right. Right, yeah, yeah.
So, eight, yeah, eight-plus seconds.
Yeah, eight-plus seconds.
So, no less than eight seconds.
Yeah, if you're gonna.
And then we have to align ourselves with the already voted-on decision, is what Matt's saying, from the selectmen.
Recommending.
How did we miss that?
Recommending.
Recommending, yeah.
So, board.
I'd like the 10 second.
I'm okay with it.
I'll vote.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's made.
Second.
Seconded by Mike Z. Roll call vote.
Les Stevens' eye.
Bernie Mac's eye.
Mike Rucker eye.
Mike's Rucker eye.
I love his food, but I'm gonna abstain, my friend.
Well, we're voting to close the hearing.
To close the hearing.
Because you've been, you've been here at the meet, that's a public hearing. Okay, all right, so let's discuss the decision. We have in our packet the Board of Selectmen's decision that was submitted from October 6, 2021, approving the sign waiver with the trial period complying with Mass DOT standards, amendment made contingent on a 60-day trial period after the install of the sign. With eight-plus.
Eight-plus second for the, the display time.
And then we have Watchfire in our packet.
That's them.
Oh, yeah, you have some recommendations?
Yes, I saw that.
And I think with the eight-second display time, we also incorporate the suggestions.
Yep. I don't have a problem.
Any discussion?
I don't have any problem with any.
Ken? Any discussion, since you're here?
I mean, it is, the selectmen have voted, but I think, you know, the longer the time that's required, the better.
Yeah.
For the display time?
For the display.
Yeah, that's why, he wanted five, and I went with eight.
Eight plus.
Well, eight, just to be clear.
Yep.
You're asking for a vote on, we're supposed to wait 60 days to see the effect.
I'd like a vote on the decision with conditions.
On the what?
The decision with conditions.
The conditions.
Approve it or deny it with conditions, and then.
Conditioning this decision, not only with the Board of Selectmen's conditions, but also our own.
Through the chair, eight seconds, minimum eight seconds?
Eight seconds is, it's a long time.
Is that reasonable?
It's a restaurant, he's gonna show addition in.
It still, it still takes a while. Eight seconds is a long time.
I'd rather have it longer so I can read it and.
Right, but I mean, a minimum, minimum of eight seconds.
I wouldn't pick a time, I'd have to work that out over. Have them come back after 60, sorry. I wouldn't necessarily pick a time at this time, because over 60 days, have them work that out, we can see how it works, and then have them come back after the 60-day trial if the selectmen decide to keep the sign. We can have them come back and discuss that frequency again.
Right, well, the only problem I'm gonna say on that is.
Safety.
During those 60 days, and I know what you're saying, but they could have lights up there blinking every second there. So, to try to prevent that distraction for 60 days, we have a.
We're gonna have to be pretty detailed on this decision. So, yes, so the 60-day period, eight-plus, unless the selectmen decide during that review period that they want 12 seconds or 20 seconds.
Right, but we're just saying minimum.
Correct, okay.
You know what I'm saying? They can go, they want it every hour, I could care less. But I just want to stop that.
Well, if the selectmen say eight seconds is no good, then they, we've gotta adjust according to the selectmen.
Correct.
Okay, so this is gonna be a little tricky permit with conditions.
Yeah.
So, that's one condition. Was there anything else?
That's it.
So, subject to the Board of Selectmen, let's do that first, their waiver and their conditions, and 24 hours a day, you had mentioned.
Does I was down?
Yeah.
It says 24 hours a day on the application.
If I may, by Watchfire, they have a recommendation where hours of operation is five to midnight, and then with the static message after midnight to 5:00 AM. So, no, no type of changing of the sign or whatever.
Right, between 5:00 and 12:00.
But they're saying between 5:00 AM and midnight, they're allowed to do this.
Yes.
Right, that's the recommendation that you guys are gonna run with?
Just some guidance, I mean, they're gonna more than put a static file at night, you know, that.
Yeah.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, so static, the 12:00 AM to 5:00.
That's under D.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And maybe on the C, the maximum illumination.
To be determined by the chief.
Looks like not.
Yes.
Is what they recommend.
Through the chair to Mike, would you rather that that be to be determined by the chief of police, the illumination and brightness?
Who's the complaint caller?
The zoning enforcement officer would be, one night would receive the complaint. Everybody can have an opinion.
Right, and that's.
If it becomes a nuisance, I think that he can hang it down on nuisance.
It's gonna be coming down the.
Okay, that works.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's.
I get the complaints, and I'll have to go down and.
Correct.
Turn down the light, turn down the light.
Ladder and screwdriver.
Yeah, exactly. You twist it.
Okay.
Anyone am required to register with Amber Alert? I mean, that's good, right?
No.
No?
We don't, I'm sorry, say that again, Tracy.
The Amber Alert? That was another suggestion under. If there's an Amber Alert?
If they want.
If there's a child missing?
I have no problem with them doing that, if they would wish to participate.
Or after the 60 days, as this goes forward, to see what is available and how this all works out.
Is that something they can do?
Well, he wrote it down.
Okay.
On the thing, on the list, I'm just pulling out my list off.
Okay.
I don't know much about illuminated sign. The owner should register with Amber Alert. Is that okay?
I guess closing.
Agreement?
So, I think the zoning, you guys won't be the answer.
Give us a nod.
Yeah. Easy to sign on.
All right, board, I think that's, I mean, the big caveat is the Board of Selectmen, they have, they rule, so whatever we say, it really doesn't, it's not the number-one person.
Correct.
So, if they do not like it because of A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
Minor condition, our decision becomes null and void if the 60-day trial is not approved by the selectmen.
Okay. That's a good one. I'll entertain a motion.
So, move.
Motion made by Ernie.
Yep.
Seconded by Jake, roll call vote for the approval with conditions.
With approval with conditions as.
Special sign permit.
With special sign permit for the sixty-day trial.
Yeah, just clarifying for the record.
Correct, Les Stevens' eye.
Ernie Mac's eye.
Mike Rucker eye.
Mike's Rucker right?
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Sixty days.
Today, good luck.
All right, guys.
It could be like Stockbridge.
I know, it seemed like it was a good idea. We spent a lot of meetings, the subcommittee, sign bylaws, like many.
And you guys brought, you guys brought vegetables and the potatoes and forget the meat.
Town of Stockbridge in Western Massachusetts, you won't see one of these signs.
Correct, correct.
All you can put up is a wooden sign.
Yeah, like hand carved, you can't even use a tool to carve it, you have to hand carve it. Okay, all right. Let's try to expedite this. ASD Wallam Lake Solar, 269 Wallam Lake Road, decommissioning fund agreement, possible votes.
Now, chair, I have a general update here, and I'll defer slightly to Ken Fraser here, just to verify what I'm saying and to add anything. The decommissioning document has been executed by both parties. We had a peer review walkthrough prior to our last meeting. The stormwater, excuse me, that agreement for the stormwater bond has been established and signed by both parties. We are yet to receive the actual payment for that, but there has been confirmation that the payment has been sent. They are located in Canada, there is a time that it takes to get here. So we're waiting on those funds, and they did receive our final peer review, with that bond estimate was $95,000, and that's what they're sending over. But their engineers have not started work yet, they're waiting for their team to respond to our peer review consultant, and we're awaiting those comments to date. Anything I missed?
They had discussions with the property owners down on Shore Road.
That's right.
Litigating, they're going to actually have a meeting up at, I think, the resource room.
Okay.
With one of the litigants down there. And one of them, they've already agreed to fix her driveway. Been talking with that and break it out, clean it out.
Good, excellent.
Okay, I think one of the butters is on the line.
Yep.
Janine, do you have anything to add? Name and address, please.
I couldn't actually hear what was just said, so I'm sorry. I heard that the engineer had, they hadn't started work yet, but I couldn't hear what Mr. Fraser said.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but name and address for the record, please.
Oh, it's Jean Lawrence, 11 Wallam Lake Road, in Douglas.
Okay.
Jean, what I had said is that according to Lawrence Cook, he asked you, Wallam Lake has been in litigation with two of the people on Shore Road, two of the families on Shore Road, with regards to remediation of problems down there. One was agreed to, which was your neighbor with her driveway. Sorry, I can never remember her name.
Madeline Myers.
Madeline Myers, they're going to fix her driveway, clean out all of the silt and sand and all that, but that, the cleaning of the silt and sand, he said, was going to happen in the spring of the year, because they're going to end up having to reseed and that, but they were going to take care of her driveway. And the other one was further down, Natalie.
I can't remember.
Maybe Nada or Jenny?
Jane, yes, Virginia.
Virginia, with the, with the water problem that she had going through the basement.
Okay, so, I know, I spoke to Madeline, I communicated with her, and she's, I don't think aware that, you know, I know Lawrence Cook stopped by and said maybe they did something with her driveway, but she's not aware that there's any clear agreement.
Well, this, this information, this information was just brought to us yesterday.
Yeah, just by word of mouth, so we don't have anything in writing either, through the chair, sorry. So this is just information, we're relaying, that's all.
Madeline was trying to get on Zoom, but she can't, and she's, so I know she's concerned, and I know Nada's concerned, and I understand that Jenny, Virginia, was concerned. And we had another meeting, and then Jenny was going to try to be here, I don't know if she's here, but I don't, you know, but I might be a little out of the loop, but I myself was going to contact Lawrence Cook, because I think people don't realize that the water that used to come to the cove, it kind of overflowed sideways down, there's a new little stream that goes across the street from me, and that water comes and goes through my basement. I don't have a, it's crawl space, but it has a furnace and an oil tank, and so I don't know, have to be a valuator for mold and all kinds of things, so I, yeah, I guess we all thought that this was still being worked out with the solar farm, and that they will be allowed to get their certificate of completion until these problems were addressed, and we're not aware that they are addressed.
So what we've had them do is post $95,000 for the remaining work for the stormwater system. If they want that money back, they have to complete the work, and if they don't complete the work, we're going to seize that money and complete the work. So that's our bond to ensure that that work gets completed, okay? As far as the homes on Shore Road, what we've heard so far directly from Mr. Cook is that there is intent to remediate some issues with your neighbors, okay? Just verbal word of mouth, so we don't have anything in writing in that regard, and I don't believe the town's going to be involved with that legally. That's just what we've heard from the applicant ourselves. Whether or not he needed to tell us that, we don't know, but he did, okay? So that information was passed on us. All we're able to control at this point is the remaining stormwater work that needs to be done on the site. So so far, we have commitment of bond, we're waiting for those funds, and we're waiting for their report from their engineer, as if they want to refute our engineer's determination. So we still have some time here, but we are, we are staying very close on this, and making sure that this gets in writing as intended by this board and our town staff.
So.
This dismay that people thought that it was, you know, they thought they couldn't speak here or anything. So, so I understand what you just said, you have $95,000 for a bond, that they have to complete work that's supposed to correct the issues that caused the water drainage.
Yes, ma'am.
And that that should correct the problems of residents on Shore Road, so that there's not future damage. Is that, is that correct? But you're not saying that that, you're not saying that you're going to be involved in making them correct the damage, but you're going to make them correct future damage, is that correct?
Just, just to help clarify, what Matt Benoit was referring to, is the money is to correct the problems related to the site, and the drainage related to the site, not anything on Shore Road itself that we're aware of. Just the site and the solar. Okay, just, because the way you read it back was slightly different, related to repairs.
I meant to say, I understood, that's what you were saying. But, but that the correction on the work on the site should stop future excess water flow to Shore Road.
Correct, correct.
To be designed.
From only that site, it should stop any future problems from that site.
Yes.
Yes.
What, what the problems are with the rest of Shore Road and the Wallam Lake drainage system, it's not addressing any of that.
Yeah, so, so actually, I'm glad you mentioned that, because at a prior meeting, I think it was you who said that, that the terrace always had drainage problems, and they don't do anything about it. And I wanted to clarify that what we're talking about, I don't think has anything to do with the terrace and drainage problems on the terrace. These are new problems that are created further down the road and are physically separate from the terrace. And we, the neighbors all hoped that you would not conflict with any prior issues with the terrace with what's happening to our properties now. So I just wanted to clarify that, it's really two different things. And so, and I know that it's been said this is a private road, and it's kind of our issue, but, but the town has made decisions about development, and I think both the solar farm and the town and Mr. Von Reed, who leases the land, will all derive some financial benefit from the solar farm, and I think it would be quite wrong if that proved to be the detriment of residents on Shore Road. So I hope that, that the plan were to take very seriously, that the damage that was done to properties on Shore Road, should, the solar farm should be required to correct that before they're allowed to continue operation.
Okay.
You know, I think everybody is all upset, and if they're not here tonight, it's hard, and because they think it will do any good, but I'm certainly hopeful that it will, because I'm lucky.
Okay, thank you very much. So on our agenda was decommissioning fund agreement, but you can contact Matt during the week outside of our hearing, and I would be diligent on what the happenings are on there. So whether it be the minutes been submitted, the engineering's been done, I think that communicating with Matt would give you notification if it's moving forward or what's exactly happening, versus our board is in the purview of the permit that was issued, and so it's kind of separate from our agenda item for tonight. So I would communicate with the town hall during daytime hours to make sure you know what's going on.
We are being very diligent with this, we're watching it very carefully, and if the system is not solved, and they did, if the work doesn't solve the problem, we're not releasing their money. We're going to hold that until the system solves the problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? Anything else, okay, ongoing question. Okay, number three, Flying Goose LLC, site plan review, special permit, decision signatures for 286 Webster Street. It's ready to go in our packet.
Yes, ma'am.
Any comments?
The conditions that were added were discussed at the meeting. Those four conditions were that they must first obtain the provisional license from Cannabis Control Commission, constructed in accordance with the approved plans, abide by all approvals requirements of applicable town departments, boards, and commissions, and the applicant will work with the chief of police to ensure that all security measures are operational prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. I did share this decision with the applicant, and they were satisfied with the language. I will point out that I did make one modification to our decision templates with the help of Jen Kutcher. What we decided is that when something does need a special permit and site plan review concurrently, these two decisions could be combined, so long as you list the finding criteria for both special permit and site plan review, which I combined into one decision for one set of signatures for us this evening.
They want an animated sign?
Negative.
Hey, hey, don't bring it up.
This just needs to be signed.
That's correct.
Okay, next item, does anybody have any comments on those conditions?
No.
For that one, okay. Deer Crossing, definitive request for release of lots 21A and 29 on Woodland Road, Phase 6A. I see the developer is here, Matt, do you want to go first? Okay, all right, Tim, do you want to go and just give us an update and name and address for the record?
Chairman, Board, we're here for you tonight to request your help on two issues. First has to do with an existing bond for Woodland Road from South Street to Old Farm Road. The town sold it for $46,000 cash, probably, a number of years ago. That section of Woodland Road has been accepted by the town at a recent meeting. So we would request that that bond be released to Deer Crossing. Same time, we're asking the town to set a long city for 260 feet of Woodland Road beyond, beyond Old Farm, which will allow us to build on lots 29 and 21A and cross the street. So we've submitted calculations, not exactly sure the numbers have been before, but we've submitted calculations of this crisis to Mr. Benoit, and I understand that the town's consultant here is redoing that, submitting calculations for the occupancy.
For $17,206.
That's for release.
He has $17,206.
Is that?
What? No.
Full release, John, setting up $17,206. That's what he's asking.
On the filing of the bond that boots, Benoit's recommendation.
Just through the chair, Tim, the road length, you said 260 feet, is that just got binder on it right now?
Yes.
Just binder, okay. And so the $17,000 is what you're looking for, what's submitted for that, the bond to be.
Two lots.
The bond to be posted to release those two lots. Okay, so.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I think the board or Matt should confer with highway superintendent during some of the construction that's been going on down there. They've been walking excavators up and down the road, and there has been some damage done to it. I'm not sure what the extent is.
Okay.
And I know he made a comment that he wouldn't sign off on anything until that damage was fixed, so.
Okay.
I don't think we should release anything until we know for sure that the road is.
Well, I think we need to release the original bond, that the road has already been accepted.
I'm not sure if part of the road that was walked on was part of the road that we already accepted, or if it's just on the part that they're developing now.
Station 00 to 32 plus 50.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
The town accepted it, dropped off an excavator.
We can't hold that, we can't hold that money for that portion.
Which portion are we talking about?
The accepted portion by the town.
So Woodland up to Old Farm Town Road was accepted, up to that, that area there.
From South Street.
South Street.
Up to Old Farm.
Town Road, that was accepted.
I could probably clarify, the, the area that he's talking about is in the area of 53, 51, lot 51, 53, and I believe it's 48 across the street. They had an excavator continually going back and forth. The highway superintendent went down there, told them that they should be planking this road to run anything across. The second time he went down there, said now you have to repair the road, so I don't know where it's at, as far as that goes. But that's the road damage that Ernie's talking.
Do we have the, do we have the bond amount? The total bond amount for this amended Deer Crossing bond? Anybody?
I can get that.
He mentioned 46,000.
Yeah, I'll get it.
Tim, do you, are you aware of the repair that needs to be done for between 48 and 53?
53.
It's in here, you're right across from lots 57 and 58, the most recent damage caused by.
Can we mute that, please? It's our man Bob, oh. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that, Tim.
Okay, the damages between 50.
In the area across from lots, or in front of lots 57 and 58, where there's some building going on now. The most recent damage caused by the rental company that we leased the machine from, when they went to pick up the machine at 6:30 in the morning, and nobody was around, they crossed the road, and we have told the John, the superintendent, we will grind that area out and fix it. We are in the process of paving the common driveway of 57 and 58. At this time, we intend to address that area that was damaged.
This year? This year? Are you planning, okay.
46,000. So it's 46,000.
Okay, so it is not in the, the damage is not in the section of accepted roadway for Deer, for Woodland Road.
The damage is in that portion of Woodland, that the town has accepted. We are taking responsibility for the damage.
So we're going to hold the bond. We're going to hold the bond.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so just through the chair, so it is, is in the accepted portion of where the town is accepted. I, as a member, and, you know, in the time of season where we are now, is, I'd like the highway superintendent to, you know, make sure that the, the correct, the work is done correctly, and so it doesn't have to be revisited in the spring, because of, we've got cold temperatures and stuff like that, and you're trying to pour asphalt. We're getting too close to the end of the season of asphalt season and to be working in the road area.
He's saying, so we could probably table the bond release to December 9th and it, the work should be completed and assess factory report from John before our meeting?
Do you want John to answer the report?
Tim?
Oh yes, I'm sorry. Is that a question for me?
Yes. Do you, more of, do you agree to have the work done by December 9th so we can?
Through the chair, I mean, I don't, I don't know if they'll still be doing hot topping on December 9th.
Very close.
Right.
What's the cost of the repair?
No, well, that's what I'm saying, that, that
Yeah.
I'm thinking that just something in writing, when in agreement with the highway superintendent, maybe a certain amount of money not released on the bond and the rest we can release in the cost of that repair. Because hot top season is coming to an end.
You've got another few weeks, that's about it.
Yeah.
Well, he's saying he's paving the common drive, so they're gonna do it this year.
All right, well, if that's fine, if they can do that, then give us a time, however you wanna work it out. I'm just, I just wanna point out the fact that there is damage and I know the highway superintendent wants something done about it.
Yeah, we clarified that the 57, 58 is within our town accepted area.
Through the chair, can we just table releasing the bond and stuff right now? Come back, review this on the 9th, hopefully it's all fixed. If it is, release the bond.
Okay, and then we also
Is that, you understand what I'm saying?
I do it. We were, the reason why we're anxious for this release is that we're trying to get a foundation in lot 29.
So that's the second portion.
Yeah.
So we didn't really discuss the lot release yet and we don't have an approved bond amount for those lots. So you're requesting lots 21A and 29 to be released.
Only upon, only upon the, providing a, a bond figure recommended by
Well, agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed by our third party.
So through the chair, there could be a motion there, whatever, to
Release the lot.
Release the lots upon approval of a bond.
A conditional release?
I don't recommend.
And if a signature needs to be made, you pass it to the chair to sign that release.
Yeah.
That's acceptable.
I don't work on that.
Is that agreed upon?
It's not recommended method. Let me hear from Matt.
Sure. Two reasons where, and I hate to be the bad guy here, but I don't recommend a conditional lot release for two reasons. A, we're not sure if this amount is accurate and we have sent that out to our engineer to find out if it is. The bond then needs to be established and there's the Schedule Z form that needs to be reviewed by our town council. And, and then this decision upon a vote of the planning board signatures must also then be notarized. So those items would not be taking place this evening, even if we wanted them to.
So the vote would be conditional on those items?
Well, yeah, that's what it is. If that takes place within that amount of time. Where this project's been going on, it's been a good project.
Oh, yeah.
We haven't had any issues. And that's why at times we'll do this, depends on the type of project that's happening.
Our next meeting's at, on the 9th. It's not, I mean, it's not like it's four weeks away, it's closer because you get a holiday break. I'd like to see, you know, I think for the first part of this, the discussion that we had regarding the damaged roadway, I agree with Ernie, if there's a certain amount that John says, hey, we need X amount of money set aside to ensure that the road's done correctly and that we don't have a problem in the spring, then we can release the remaining portion of the $46,000 that's held. On the first, on the first, on that first item, I think on this other item to Matt's point, it's 260 feet of road that's only got a binder right now. And so they haven't gone through the calculations to make sure that that's, I see your point, so.
Well, again, that is, we don't need to go reconfiguring pricing, just hold what we have right now. He's gonna be paving this week or in the next couple of weeks and go from there.
These lots are outside the
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the paving.
Yeah, but
You know, you're talking about refiguring everything for him to fix the road. Why, we're holding his bond. Hold that bond till it's paved.
You need a new bond for the new area that he's going in.
The new area, I'm talking about the damage there.
Okay, so I think we're going to table the bond release for the accepted road. I, I'm not even sure if we can hold that legally.
Right.
So I'd like to have town council's opinion on that from the next meeting. And if we are not legally allowed to hold some bond amount because it's already been accepted at this date, then we need to release it. I, I don't see that
Then, who repairs the road?
A funny feeling, like you can't actually do that.
I trust it, through the chair, I trust that Tim will do the right thing because he always has. We've been dealing with him for a long, long time. It's a beautiful development and you've always, you've always worked well with us. I just wanted to point out the fact that whoever you're contracting down there did, made a mistake and ripped up some of the road that we accepted, which was a good road. So something has to be done about that because it's your contractor. As far as the lot releases, the board can decide on that because that's, that's part, that's outside of this. It's part of the construction that's going on right now, so we, as far as I know, we're perfectly able to release lots.
Once the, the requirements are met.
Right.
So the three requirements, I think we can do a conditional vote as long as those meet the requirements and everyone would need to come in and sign in the office with Matt.
Or if I can, through the chair too, if we find out this week, if town council's contacted and he says, no, you can't hold this bond, I say then we'll release, make a motion to release the appropriate bond that is agreed upon back to Tim. And then go ahead and worry about the road. If we have to hold something down the road to make sure it gets fixed, we'll take care of it that way. But town council says we can't hold that bond and we can't hold that bond. I think it's released immediately.
I just wanted to point out what was going on and try to come to some resolution of straightening it out.
Yeah.
But I have no problem with, with releasing lots.
Right. You know what I mean though? We can't hold that bond, we can't hold it.
I agree.
So it should be released prior to the next meeting.
So I would need to make a motion if that is a legal requirement. If not, we don't have the motion, so. He's requesting it, it's not on the, yes?
If I might, you know, if the board is having trouble with releasing the bond, I could withdraw the request that the existing bond be released.
And release the lots.
The board votes to release 29 and 21 on a figure.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah.
That simplifies the whole problem.
Okay, thanks Tim.
We'll add additional funds.
Yeah, okay, so let's pass over the bond release if we could double check with town council.
Yes.
And then as far as the request for release of lots 21A and 29, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
For the conditional release as long as the
Requirements met.
Requirements are met as previously stated in the meeting. Motion made by Ernie?
Second.
Second by Mike G. Roll call vote.
Well, Stephen's eye, Ernie Mock's eye.
Mike Greco eye.
Mike Zooker eye.
Aaron Sokrath eye.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Hey, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we'll have to comment. If you send an email, call Mike and Ernie.
Yeah, you gotta call them.
If everything is met, what, what do you want?
No, no, it's all good. All right, good. Ernie's the bat phone and Mike's the
So next, we have an accessory apartment extension, John and Tracy Hill, 106 Walnut Street, possible votes.
Don't see it.
Have that in your packet?
They do not.
No.
You have one, Ernie has the other.
Okay.
There's only two.
And, all right, and then there's another accessory apartment extension, Robert and Adriana Podelak, 56 West Street. And then a ZBA variance application, David Brown, 32 Cottage Colony, who would like that for review?
It's in the triangle.
I recuse myself from the deliberation.
There you go.
Notice of decision we have to sign in Douglas Development for, for the prelim and Springtown Meeting 2022 Articles for Consideration. Is that a new thing?
Yes, it is.
Okay, do you wanna talk?
Sure.
Before we start on that, can I mention something? What happened at town meeting on a bounce? Why did not that go through? It was agreed upon, I thought it's
The, you're talking about the monuments?
Yeah.
They decided to take the money out and put it into the operation budget for the planning board, correct? It was, it was, they thought it would be easier instead of going back and every town meeting just to put it over there and have it part of the operation. Gene came to us, me, Matt, and Matt.
Well, that's why I wish we were told that before.
It was
I go to town meeting, it's like, okay, what's going on here?
It was
Be discussion on that when things have changed, when we're following subjects and we're on the board. So we should know when there's changes going on, on situations of that nature when we agree upon a certain way and then it's changed and we're not told it's being changed. That's not, not cool.
I agree. It was, I was aware of the discussion, I wasn't in favor of it because I wanted that something to get done, not wait till the spring. So they were, Gene was gonna follow up with the selectmen and then they went in that direction. And then we didn't have a meeting in between.
No, but everybody says about emails and phone calls. We get emails and phone calls and everything else. A phone call or an email could have gone out on that subject matter. Because we, the board, voted on it a certain way.
Does the result say? Funds are there?
Funds will be there in the, in the spring, will be out in the spring. That was Matt's
Correct.
Correct. But we also, we already have money for a project right now that we haven't even tackled on, tackled yet, which is Conservation Drive, which is Preservation Park. That, that money's been, it's already set aside and allocated for that project. Me and Matt have discussed getting through the town meeting and after he gets his feet on the ground a little bit more, that we would open up the subdivision plan and meet with the surveyor who did the initial work so that we can target so many of the monuments to do in Preservation Park.
All right, no, I, I agree with what's going on, but I just wanted to get that point out there. When decisions are made on this board and then changes are made behind the board and we're not told about it till after the fact, that's not good.
And we're elected officials.
Stuck with our original decision.
So, just letting it be known. So in the future, please, anything like that goes on, we should all be notified one way or another.
So I have some articles for consideration. Sorry. Things that I've kind of learned since I've been here. Items that could use tune-ups in our bylaws. We're trying to tackle a couple of little things out front before we really get into some big things. One of the small things that, that Ken and I have noticed in our zoning bylaws is a lack of accurate height description. We understand that heights of structures are typically measured by an average. You know what, Ken, you're gonna touch that one. You go right ahead.
When you have a structure that, we have a listing 35 feet. So here's an example, I had a house come in for, for a permit. The garage end of the house is 39 feet. The other end of the house is 26. Do you give them a permit? According to our bylaws, it says 35 feet. Didn't have any description of where you get the measure from. So what I proposed for a measure was an average of four points.
Just consistent with code.
Okay.
So that's one minor mod
Yeah.
For consideration.
It cleans up the language.
Now, I've also would like to introduce an irregularity factor to our subdivision rules and regulations. This is so we don't get these odd shaped lots like you almost spotted earlier today with the long sliver of land to create frontage. An irregularity factor is an equation that you run 16 times the area over the perimeter squared. It comes out with a coefficient and if the lot does not meet that coefficient, it would not be approved. This keeps lots from looking like spaghettis and all sorts of odd shapes just to try to catch on to your zoning determination. Just for discussion, it's not something we're gonna throw out there right away. But it's, it's something I'd like to open up to the board just for consideration.
Personally, I think if you have your frontage, it's irrelevant. We require 200 feet of the frontage. If there isn't, then there's a formula for that.
Sure.
This is an old, lot of old farm land out here, all divvied up. Even my own, land has been sold when I bought my land, that they got about 50 feet
I understand.
Previous lot.
This, this, this equation would not affect existing lots. This would only be for the creation of new lots, so.
So he's just running down
And I just want, and this is just, I'm not, I'm not making a rule.
Mine wasn't pre-existing. Mine wasn't a brand new lot.
Understood. I'm not making a rule now, I just wanna open it up for discussion. That's all I wanna do. Not tonight, but in the future.
Or an alternate approach could be with
Yeah.
With requirement.
With requirement.
I'd love the opportunity to show you.
Zoning setback.
Another thing that's not in our bylaw is site plan approval of butter notifications, it's not required.
Site plan approval, we need some work on, generally speaking.
That's something we have to consider, it's a minor change.
Or we put that into a different category of special permits.
Great, agreed. 55-plus bylaw, it's already a draft out there for us to consider, I'd like to continue working on that. I've been approached by a member, excuse me, a developer who did Stonegate Road. I believe he's, I hope I'm saying that right, maybe it's Stonegate Development, regardless.
Yeah, what about it?
Yes, thank you. He wants to try to get his road accepted at town meeting. So that's something that he's ready to present and would like to start the process.
Cobblestone.
Rafferty.
Rafferty, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I just needed the board's permission really to just engage an engineer to do the final review.
Can we ensure that the monuments are
In place?
In place?
Good call.
Because we've got
In the asphalt, so.
We're on quite a few.
I know they're sitting right there in the yard. They're right there.
I, I understand, but in, in the yard is not
Who's, who's handling it right now?
His daughter.
It was his son and then his son was doing so well and then his daughter came into us and said she'd like to get the project finished up.
Well, he's the one who came in, so.
Who?
Mike Rafferty.
Mike?
Mike.
Mike's back up and running again.
So The other thing I wanted to, for us to discuss is some limits of deforestation. Kinda heard me mention it in subdivisions anyways, to prevent clear cutting of lots that are of certain sizes. I'd like to put at least some sort of template out there for us to review, not something that we might do at Springtown Meeting.
Can't cut trees, yeah.
Over 15,000 acres of state
You can, you gotta back up on that.
Sure.
State law, if you burn wood.
Yeah.
You can cut 10 quart of water near property every year in the middle of the swamp.
I'm not talking about people, I'm just talking about like new projects that are like hundreds of acres of land instead of them just clear cutting the whole thing to do it in phasing.
Forest cutting plans.
That's why we have usually a phase
Lands Protection Act also for heating your home and your source of heat is
You're not talking about residential.
No. No, but if it's a subdivision project that's 200 acres, we don't want them knocking the whole thing over at once. All right, that's, that's really all I'm talking about.
Start with a size, at what size?
Yeah, and we'll talk about that.
Well, forest cutting plans are 15 acres, right?
Yeah, and those are proved in a different manner, obviously. And one of the main reasons I wanted to consider this is for solar arrays because they're just knocking trees down for solars. And what I've seen in other communities is you wanna prefer that solar arrays are looking for places that are already cleared. Existing farmland, landfills, places that don't have trees covering them completely. So if our, if our bylaw could be modified in that regard, then they're not clear cutting
We just did solar.
Yeah, we would have to modify our existing
My only concern with solar is, aren't they covered in the Dover?
No.
They're not?
Not Dover, that's churches and schools.
I thought what we were told by
Solar by Dover?
Yeah.
Dover members, long before solar.
I thought they added, didn't they?
I'd love to see that, okay.
Yeah, check in.
Check in anyway, just
That's what we were told. Yeah, you check it, that's what we were told.
The website adopted that to.
Yeah, he saw, he saw the bylaw.
To limit the solar in residential.
Correct, the arrays, he saw that by law.
I don't think it's Dover.
It's just something to consider, that's all. Just things I've been thinking about, that's all I wanted to share.
Did you mention by chance signed by law?
No, that one's on here. Would you like to talk about that?
Number one.
Okay.
I think that should be the first thing that we.
Okay, that's on here, so.
Board or a subcommittee.
That, 55 and older.
Douglas used to be 100% deforested too.
Yeah.
So it grew back.
Well, that's good.
So.
It did grow back.
So as far as the signed by law, I'm probably going to get a lot of flack for this. But I, I would like to get the signs under the control of ZBA instead of the general bylaws of the selectmen. The reason being, the reason being, and you guys can negate this all you want, is that typically, usually signs are not reviewed under a general bylaw. That is, that is pretty unique, all right? When the building commissioner makes a determination on anything in town, it's usually appealable to the ZBA. And if for some reason in this town, only signs go to the selectmen. And I think that's, I don't think that's consistent with a lot of practices throughout the Commonwealth.
No. We had it set up.
It's not like 25 bylaws that were general bylaws.
All the signs come in front of the planning board, so the process is handled at the same time.
That's under site plan review.
That's only under site plan review, correct.
I would do zoning by law with approval from planning board.
Yes.
I, I kind of saw that one coming. So the reason I.
You gotta remember a couple of things. The planning board's an elected board, it's been brought up before, and ZBA is an appointed board.
Right.
So they try to have a lot of it go through the planning board.
I understand. I understand, however, in a sign, when it's just a sign and there's no site plan review attached to it. Okay, says determination. And if they want to negate that, that's an appeal and that will go to ZBA because of the Board of Appeals. But if it's site plan review.
So exactly how.
It stays with the planning board. If it's part of their site plan review for new development.
So that, that's how I would write it up?
Yes.
Is that if, if it is non-site plan review, project, sign.
Correct.
Then that way there, it sets up the appeal and process and stuff like that.
Correct.
Keeps with how all the.
New construction, new monument signs, things that are on a building for new construction.
Yeah.
Yes.
New, yeah.
Yes, stays planning.
Yeah, new development, commercial, whatever.
Yep, agreed. So matter for discussion, that's all. Things that you will see in the pipeline, that's all.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
I left the big ones out.
Forward.
Bring them on in.
And next, the, unless you guys want to stay here all night.
On the, on the meeting?
Yes.
All right, so you know.
Meeting schedule.
June, July and August will be the only whole one meeting. We don't do two in the summer.
Well, it's proposed so we can have a discussion.
Yeah, where we go.
On, because we, I think historically have added a meeting.
50/50 as needed. It's summertime and vacations and things of that nature.
Places to go.
Been on here 12 years. We've only had one meeting in the summer months.
I fully agree with that. I fully agree with that. I just noticed they only did them once in November, December, and I know that's holiday based.
And that's because of the holiday?
Yes.
Then the other one we have to watch out for is election day.
Yes.
For town elections.
Yep.
The two of them.
So I am okay with scratching June and July.
No, 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 but the June, July and August. There's a spring election and then there's the November election.
Yep, yep, I understand.
Those dates were verified.
2nd Thursday and May.
June 9th.
We also have to look for all sorts of religious holidays too, so.
Yep.
The.
So which ones are we eliminating?
July 14th or the other, one of the other.
Now, we still.
Oh, the, so.
Pre-COVID, what we used to have, so everybody, we used to be on Tuesday nights, not Thursday nights. Are we, is this board, are we staying now on Thursday nights?
Yeah, the selectmen are in this room on Tuesday nights. So it could be in the other room.
Are we staying in the big room? Are we going back to the small room? What's, what's our flavor going on here?
It's Tuesday's small room or Thursday's big room?
We're, Thursday, Thursday, big room, I think.
Yeah, I don't mind being here.
But in the same, we, we made a change and everything because of COVID, which may come back.
But what had happened.
I mean, I don't love Thursdays myself.
Another board requested the Tuesday nights that we used to have.
Right.
Fincom.
And, and they, and we didn't get our request in before them, so they ended up getting.
Correct.
Fincoms.
So we end up staying, so we gonna plan on going down the road? This is going to be Thursday nights?
Yeah.
I think so.
I mean, I don't love Thursdays because you can take a long weekend, like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
But you could also take Monday, Tuesday.
No, that's not good.
That's not the same love. I agree with that one.
So I have Concom on Monday and then I bang it out and then I can leave on Wednesday to on vacation.
Established that last meeting.
What's that? Can we discuss which June date we're knocking out?
Well, it was discussed again about going back on Tuesdays.
I think we need a consensus on Tuesdays versus Thursdays.
But on Tuesdays, part of that formula is that we're in that little room.
Correct, that, correct. That's what I'm saying.
We need to stay out here until further notice probably.
There's another component to this. We're going to be ordering a large piece of technology, the Starboard, that we'll be able to bring plans up on and illustrate and do all sorts of wonderful things with. And that'll only be in here.
We, we should stay here.
Yeah, I mean, I got, it's a change, but I mean, we've been doing it now for over a year.
Is there any room up in the second floor?
Unless we are opposite the selectmen's meetings on Tuesdays.
But that's when Fincom is.
Yes, that's.
That's where we lost a spot.
But did they, did they solidify their calendar yet?
Probably.
I think we're stuck with Thursday, honestly.
Yeah.
In this room we are.
Yeah. Fincom probably locked it up for the next three years.
I, yeah, I like, I'd rather stay in this room right now because we're spread out a little bit more. If we have a crowd that comes in, they can spread out away from us.
Big projects down the pipeline.
Oh, yeah, no, and I agree. I mean, we used to pack like sardines in that, in that other room.
We could all hear each other though, too.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm finding it a way, I'm just bringing it up before we vote.
Okay, let's move forward with this.
So we'll say Thursdays?
I would just, I would say just make it versus get rid of the second meeting.
Every other.
June, July and August.
So June 23rd and July 28th off the agenda and August 25th?
No, the first, the first we did.
What?
Take off the 14th, take off the 11th, 12th, 19th.
Take off the 11th?
June 9th, take off July 14th.
July 14th, take off in August 11th?
No.
He's with the office.
So we're meeting, we're meeting at the end of each month. June 23rd, July 28th and August 25th.
Sounds awesome.
Yep.
End of each month.
And it'll only be one meeting a month for all those.
We always do in the summer.
Oh, yeah, but this.
One meeting per month. We've extended the summer here, that's all I'm saying.
And considering our 2021 schedule, where we were meeting weekly first half of the year.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is a better schedule.
Snell's project, yeah.
And that's the other thing, like we had the tri-town, I'm glad we met every other and, and stuff like that. We were meeting.
They're coming back, so.
For what?
That's coming back.
Modification.
June 9th out. We're going June 23rd.
Correct.
You're talking about the 11th out? Yeah, that's coming back for.
Now you're on your fishing trips.
I don't know what's going there.
Okay, there you go.
I don't know.
The style of the building.
I don't.
Yes, I haven't been told, maybe I can figure it out.
I've been told that the tri-town's coming back for a bit because of changes.
Yeah, the buildings, the buildings changed.
Keeping this stuff the way it is, hopefully, spread out.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the planning board hearing scheduled 2022 as amended.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded by Ernie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a roll call vote put out or we just?
Ayes are good.
We're good.
Can I go back to the accessory?
I'm Director of Community Development Updates.
Just, it is, just a couple of things. I just wanted to thank Eve Tapper for her time helping us out.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I know she's not on the.
She's probably listening.
But for the record, thank you for A, recruiting me and B, helping out. Other thing I, I already mentioned, we, we're going to start some new decision templates, you're going to see those. And my next request is, I would really like us all to have nameplates. So please just let me know how you'd like your name to appear. I think I have it in our contact information. If you want to use Mike or Michael, either of you, Mike, Mike? Okay, just checking. Anyone else want to use the extension of their first name for any reason?
Jake.
Jake, you got it.
Jacob.[1484.22]